Okay, good evening. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. If everyone would please stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Chase.
Here.
Carl Hauck.
Here.
Alex Karazi.
Yes.
Cecile MacIver.
Here.
Robert Mettler. Mustafa Manzaray asked to be excused. Charles Brown.
Here.
Robert Thomas. Robert Thomas.
Here.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Here.
Godwin Omalola.
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini.
Here. So, just a little housekeeping before we start. The hearing for Asia Abraham, which is the subdivision on Wilson Road, is carried to February 7, 2017 without further notification. So...
2018.
Well, I'm just reading what's on here. 2018, so typo, without further notification. Other than that, the agenda is as printed. So, we'll start with the interviews for the circulation element for the master plan, and we'll start with CME.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to step down during the course of all three of these interviews.
Don't leave the building. So, I assume you guys probably have gotten those sort of questions and overview that the board would like, so in 10 minutes or less, give us your elevator speech.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Rob Russo from CME Associates, here with Peter Van De Coy, CME Associates Director of Planning, and also Jim Watson, our Director of Transportation. As you know, we're here tonight to talk about the RFP for preparing the circulation element of the master plan. Some of the members may know CME Associates. I was actually here in the spring presenting plans for the Catapa Park improvements. We've also been consulting engineers for the township for almost 20 years now. Just by way of quick background, we're a multi-discipline engineering firm established in 1983. Since that time, we've grown to over 220 employees. Out of six offices, we represented or currently represent over 100 governmental entities. We've been authorized over the years by Franklin Township to work on a wide range of projects, and in that time, we believe we've developed a great working relationship with the township and the township staff. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Peter, our Director of Planning, so we could talk in more detail about the RFP.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, well, thank you, Rob. I'm the Director of Planning at CME, and I guess just, I could start by giving you a little bit of background about our department and experience. We have a total of seven planners in the department, four of which are licensed, both with New Jersey Planning License and AICP certification. We've got extensive public and private experience with, you know, as far as the public experience goes, providing municipal services throughout the state in terms of master plans, ordinances, redevelopment plans, planning and zoning board representation and reviews, and that those services include substantial experience preparing circulation elements. And some of the other municipalities where we've done that recently include Neptune Township, Gloucester Cities, we're just wrapping that up right now, Key Ports I was involved in last year, and we've worked in all different types of municipalities, from Bayonne in West New York to municipalities very similar to Franklin, such as Hillsborough, to very rural municipalities in Cumberland, Salem Counties. We've got a wide breadth and depth of experience, and I guess, you know, some of the things that we bring to the table in addition to having a planning department, we've got a very experienced transportation department, which has, from what I understand, a very broad experience both in South Brunswick and North Brunswick Townships, immediately adjacent. And, you know, I think that through those, through our experience and our expertise, I think that we can, you know, provide a very detailed and comprehensive update of the township circulation element, looking at some of the, you know, the current issues, not only in the township but globally as far as transportation issues are concerned, linking to mass transit, changes in demographic and behavioral patterns, all these different sorts of things that have to be considered when you're looking at not only current conditions but conditions out over the next 10 or 20 years. So, I don't want to take up too much of your time because I wanted to leave some time for Q and A in case you had questions for us, but I think that's all I have.
Anybody from the board want to ask any questions with regards to the firm and their ability to execute this RFP?
Mr. Chairman, the suggested question number three, do you want to ask that question? I think that's pretty, that's pretty critical.
Yeah, so, question number three was essentially, the key components of the project are the coordination and support of the township's economic development efforts, including potential improvements to mass transportation opportunities, coordination and support to the township's revitalization efforts in the Hamilton Street Corridor, including pedestrian and bicycle improvements, as well as potential improvements to mass transportation, coordination and building upon recommendations and analysis in existing township studies and plans, and those of outside agencies such as Somerset County and the State of New Jersey, and an evaluation of potential complete street initiatives. So, with respect to those elements, can you kind of give us your background and approach?
Get us started, essentially, as with regard to economic development, I would imagine you're looking at both projects in terms of redevelopment areas and other types of specific site-oriented initiatives, as well as corridor revitalization, commercial rezonings, the issues that come along with that, such as parking to accommodate business, sensitivity to parking for residents, and all those sorts of things. And I noticed that you said mass transit as well. So, we could bring our experience that we have in, you know, municipalities that host train stations, municipalities that are adjacent to train stations, Key Port is actually one of those, there's Hazlet, and Matewans Train Station is nearby, and we could look at all the different types of issues that come into play when you're looking at, you know, revitalization along a commercial corridor versus residential areas, linkages to mass transit through bus service or perhaps shuttles to the Northeast Corridor, and things like that. In addition, as far as the outside plans and in terms of the county's plan, the SEDS Plan, and other plans, we would take a look at all those and, you know, see where there is a, an overlap and synergy with the township's goals and vision, and see what kind of outside resources we can leverage. We also have some experience in grants and funding, and we could provide recommendations for those types of opportunities as well.
What experience do you have specifically with the implementation of complete streets in the jurisdictions that you currently oversee?
So, I believe I attended your Complete Streets Seminar at Rutgers, and we've done significant amounts of work for Middlesex County and North Brunswick and adjacent communities, and we're always trying to add the connectivity, especially when we do planning board reviews and zoning board reviews, we're always trying to find out where we can find connectivity without having to rely upon the, always rely upon the arterials. We try to get the bike lanes in where we can, always do concepts with bike lanes and sidewalks, and to, you know, at least do concepts that would allow for those elements to be introduced for consideration.
Any other questions?
I have a question for you. Thank you for your submission. My question is going to center on all the various plans you have. Do you normally project what we call a backup plan for any project you handle based on your experience? Can you tell us a little about your backup strategy in case we have issues going on?
To clarify, in terms of a project having issues or more of a global emergency situation?
Yes, please, because you said you've done so many things for so many township, right?
Correct.
Right. Based on that, how do you mitigate risk along the line, based on your project work?
Okay, I could ask, answer more broadly if you want to answer more projects specifically, I guess, but, so, I guess again, I mean, I know your municipality's not really similar to Key Port, but I'll use them as an example just because it was recent plan and they were affected by Sandy, and we did an emergency operations plan, essentially a chapter of it for them, and looked at evacuation routes. And one of the things that we did is we looked at the topography of the land inundation by floodwaters, which I'm not sure would be relevant in much of the township here, and what we did is, we took all those factors, put them together, and we created a map that calculated the risk of these evacuation routes, and then we looked at alternative routes. We worked with the police in town, as well as the emergency operations official, and we put together a very detailed plan for them that included mapping and strategies in case of emergency.
Any other board questions? No? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So, the next firm, H2M. Alec pointed out that the battery on that mic, that one might be dead because it's red. The light is red. Red? Is it supposed to be?
The little battery symbol was up to the top, but we'll look at it.
Well, as long as they're working, we'll let you know.
It's a little low. We'll give that one to Eric since he's going to speak more than me.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. My name's Eric Delain. I'm a senior project planner with H2M Architects and Engineers. We're a 350-person firm based out of Long Island, New York, with offices in Howell, New Jersey, and Parsippany. We like to think that we are a larger, large enough company to respond to all of our clients' needs appropriately, but not so large that we get caught up in the administrative rigor role of the larger international firms. My professional background is I've got 11 years planning, mostly in transportation planning, some redevelopment, some land use planning. I like to think I'm really a planner that does it all, that considers all of the community, considers all of the, all of the interactions between land use and transportation, which I think is important when doing transportation planning. Joined with me is Thomas Phelan, who is the president and senior, I guess, actually I'll let him introduce himself because he can do a better job than I can.
Hi, my name is Tom Phelan. I'm the president, and I call myself the Transportation Director at BHX Engineering and Planning LLC. I've got 25 years of experience in the field. I am a professional engineer by trade, and I have extensive experience with a client base from local municipalities and real estate developers all the way up to the U.S. Department of Transportation and a wide array of planning and engineering applications. So, that's my background, and I'll be here to address any issues that come up that I need to deal with.
So, more circulation element-related experience, you know, we do a lot of municipal clients, we do board representation, master plans, reexamination reports, redevelopment plans. In the course of the master planning, we will do quite a lot of circulation elements. Prior to me joining H2M, I worked for VHB, which is primarily a transportation engineering and planning firm. We've completed a number of transportation plans together, most recent, actually, most recently, H2M just completed the East Orange, the City of East Orange Master Plan that included a transportation element. Actually, I had almost passed this around too, but it's a draft form, as long as I can get it back. But this is, this is sort of representative of the work we do. You know, again, we like to think about the community as a whole, not just the transportation network by itself, not just dealing with transportation issues, but how they interact with, with the residents, with businesses, with people interested in visiting the communities, and not necessarily just the drivers, but people that walk by choice or by circumstance, people that have to use public transportation, people that choose to use public transportation, and we roll that up into, into what we ultimately develop as our circulation elements.
Okay, let me ask you the same series of questions that I asked CME, and that is, can you address the following bullet points with relation to your plans to execute this? Coordination and support of the township's economic development efforts, including potential improvements to mass transportation opportunities? Coordination and support to the township's revitalization efforts in the Hamilton Street Corridor, including pedestrian and bicycle improvements, as well as potential improvements to mass transportation? Coordination and building upon recommendations and analysis in existing township studies and plans, and those of outside agencies such as Somerset County and the State, and an evaluation of potential complete streets initiative?
So, to start off with economic development, you know, a lot of the work we do really does concern economic development. It's integral to anything that you do. I mean, transportation is about getting places to where they need to go so they have opportunities for jobs, for education, improved quality of life, to be home a little bit sooner. So, that all gets considered part of that. You know, speaking to the East Orange Master Plan specifically, the City of East Orange has two transit stations. They are huge economic development engines for that city, and not only are they experiencing a ton of growth, about $750 million over the last few years, but also the impacts of that kind of growth, and how to, how to accommodate new residents that have never lived in East Orange, people that may or may not have a car, people that are choosing to give up their cars, baby boomers, millennials, those kind of things. So, you know, when we, when we think about what we're planning for, and I know that the township is updating its land use element and economic development element right now, you know, we see this work being sort of done in conjunction with all of that because, again, that, the, what, you know, the interaction of transportation and land uses is key. Speaking to connections to public transportation, obviously, one of the most, the closest, you know, train station is New Brunswick, right along the Hamilton Street Corridor. So, while it may not be what's, you know, considered within the transit village, within, you know, one half mile of a transit village designation or necessarily walkable for a resident, there are opportunities along Hamilton Street or along Franklin Boulevard to connect people through bicycle improvements. Recent studies have shown that, you know, people may bike upwards of three miles to get to a bicycle station, so I think, or train station, rather. So, I think that there is that opportunity to make those improvements that, you know, even while it may not, you know, New Brunswick may not be within the Franklin Township, you know, within the distance, you certainly can have the ability to grow economically, encourage people to use that station, and do so through means other than through the automobile.
If I could just add to that, I think I could speak to several items in my professional capacity that relate directly to three of the four questions you asked. I serve on the Board of Directors of the Morris County Economic Development Corporation, and the, some of the critical items that you had mentioned are exactly what we're addressing at the EDC. The EDC is a kind of a joint venture between the Chamber of Commerce and the Board of Freeholders in Morris County. Transit accessibility is a critical issue up in Morris County. You have some of the highest office vacancy rates in the country in Parsippany, New Jersey, even as they're putting new buildings up in adjacent towns, and part of this is because of the lack of transit connectivity. In addition to that, the coordination between the county and its municipalities through the elected officials, as well as local economic development authorities, is part of what drives the whole process in planning for infrastructure in Morris County to this day.
Questions from the board?
Yes, a big component of a circulation element is engagement with the public, the community, and you stated that you were looking to create a transportation center for all. What experience do you have working with environmental justice populations, as well as other underserved communities throughout the transportation decision-making process?
You know, I can go right back to, back to the City of East Orange. I mean, it's, it's actually got a similar population, but it's a much more dense city. I think the...
Can you provide an example other than East Orange?
I mean, I've, we've worked in the town of Morristown, doing their unified circulation and land use element. We have worked on the Union County Transportation Plan that has a number of EJ communities, including the City of Elizabeth, Hillside, those kind of communities, even within the county of Morris that we did their county-wide circulation element. You do, again, you have the town of Morristown. The town of Dover actually is about 80% Hispanic and Latino community, so, yeah, we do have quite a bit of experience. And again, each community is very different from one another, so you can't necessarily treat them as saying, this is an EJ community, everybody has their sort of different, different experiences. In the town of Dover, you know, a lot of it was, you know, improving, you know, improving the network with complete streets, those designs and those policies to sort of encourage and connect these neighborhoods back down to the downtown, where a lot of people are walking and everything.
Yeah, if I could just add to that, Eric and I have worked together on a number of efforts. He mentioned Union County. We've done the same in Morris County as well. If any of these efforts are funded through the Metropolitan Planning Organization for Northern New Jersey as a federal conduit for funding, environmental justice is an absolute necessity for all of the plans that we produce, particularly at the county level, but if there's federal money involved at the local level, that also applies.
Last question. You spoke a lot about connectivity to and from the train stations in New Brunswick. New Brunswick is currently in the process of getting a bike share system, of which not only the residents of New Brunswick could benefit from, but people in Somerset County in general. What's your experience with bike share systems?
We haven't had direct experience, but what we did do was update the Hudson County Master Plan two years ago, and as you know, Jersey City is developing their own bike share system, and Hoboken has their own bike share system. So, part of what we did was we advised the county on, knowing that there are some other communities like Gutenberg and West New York and things like that, on ways to sort of piggyback off of that system, and identifying, you know, opportunities to share the bike share, per se. And again, you know, going back to environmental justice communities, not just that, you know, ways to connect people that typically don't have the economic means to subscribe to the typical bike share system like you see in Manhattan.
Thanks, Charles. Great questions. Anybody else?
Yes, thank you for that last information you provided. My question is, what are the plans you have for community outreach program? What plan do you have to reach out to the communities that you work in? And give two examples.
You know, community outreach, I think, is one of the most, most critical parts of developing any plan. I, you know, you know, I hate to go, keep going back to East Orange, but it's obviously the most relevant, given, given the timing and the circumstances. You know, we did a number of ward meetings that were more public workshops than, you know, sitting at a table and talking at the residents. And I think, you know, when you go in, I think the first step I would say about doing our plan for community outreach is to really hear from the township itself, to understand what are the best ways to meet, to meet up with the community, you know, traditional, you know, traditional populations that may not be necessarily as engaged as some other populations. You know, again, the best ways to do it is really to understand from the township itself the ways that it goes about doing it and pigging back off of that. I don't want to come into, into a public outreach process or meeting with the township with any preconceived notions of saying, this is how we're going to do it. With East Orange, we started off in, within the proposal, we talked about doing 10 ward meetings, and by the end of it, we had done five ward meetings, we had done a community meeting in the Greenwood section, which is a traditionally underserved neighborhood within East Orange. We did meetings with the high school, we did meetings with what they were forming as a young professional group. We went out and did, we did East Orange MAC Fest, it was Music Arts and Culture Fest, because one of the things that we found in planning is, one of the best ways to hear from people and to meet up with people is not to expect them to come to you, but finding ways to get out to them. And, you know, those were, those were some great opportunities to get some meaningful input into the plan, so that the plans really are reflective of what the community desires and the values of the community, and the things that it wants to see going forward.
If I could just add to that, because you did ask for two examples. He mentioned East Orange. Eric and I both worked together on the Morris County circulation element, and one of the creative mechanisms we used for public outreach there was to engage the community at existing events that were already scheduled throughout the calendar year, you know, a summer festival of some kind, a park festival, or, you know, a historic site that had an annual event. We conducted our public outreach events as much as we could with those, so we could engage people out where they are, where they live, and where they work and play.
Yeah, the reason why that question is very important to me is communication is the key. If you don't have communication, you're nothing. So, a feedback mechanism between you and the communities will actually enhance your performance.
Any other questions for the board?
Just want to add one other thing. So, in Franklin Township, we have quite a few senior citizens, and so reaching out to them and understanding their needs going to be also very critical. And they are located at different places, but there are some certain areas that there is a high concentration of senior citizens that they're living, and they are very critical elements or members of our communities, so it's very important, whatever the plan is, to make sure that that is included.
Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you very much.
And lastly, of the three proposals, WSP.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you so much for inviting me to speak to you today. Put my glasses on, I'm at that age. My name is Peter Kramer. I am the Director of the Planning Practice in WSP's New Jersey office. You may know our firm, WSP, by our previous name, Parsons Brinkerhoff, and we are one of the oldest and largest transportation consulting firms in the country. We have a national and an international presence. I have access to any specialty that I need, traffic engineering, geotechnical tunneling. We have guys working on the Plasky Skyway, we have guys working on the Route 72 Bridge out to Long Beach Island, but we're also a local firm. One of my colleagues, Edgardo Perez, is a traffic engineer in our Newark office, and he's doing some site plan review for one of your schools right near here at the Claremont School. In addition to our national presence, we have two New Jersey offices, we have several hundred planners, engineers, and scientists located in Lawrence Township in Mercer County, just down the road. It's about a 15 or 20 minute drive for me. We also have a Newark office, and then we have several hundred other staff in Philadelphia and about 500 or so in our New York office. So, we're a big firm, but we're also a small firm. We have a local presence. Personally, I have about 25 years of professional experience in planning. I have an engineering degree and a master's degree in engineering. I'm a licensed professional planner in New Jersey, and I also have an AICP license. I've, during that time, I've done everything from traffic projections, large traffic models, capacity analysis, township plans, circulation elements, county plans, regional plans for MPOs, metropolitan planning organizations, and statewide plans like the recent New Jersey Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan that we worked on with several other firms, sort of kind of run the gamut from large to small. I've also sat where you folks are for about 18 years. I've been on a member of the Lawrence Township Zoning Board of Adjustment, and about half of that time, I've been the chairman. So, just like you folks, I listen to these applications once a month, and I probably listened to several hundred, you know, applications during that time. I have a lot of experience in Somerset County. We have completed, just on the planning side, five assignments for the planning board. One is the circulation element for Somerset County. We've done three priority investment studies, which are economic redevelopment and integrated land use and transportation studies, and we also completed a countywide assessment of Somerset County's transit and bus service, some things that are applicable to you guys as well. In the course of that study, the three economic development studies included priority, the priority investment studies were to look at sites that, I think we looked at six or seven sites, quarters... look at sites that, I think we looked at six or seven, uh, sites, um, quarters and large areas that were in Franklin Township, including Hamilton Avenue, um, excuse me, Hamilton Street, Franklin Avenue, uh, the Davidson and World's Fair area, Elizabeth Avenue, and a cou- a couple of other sites, uh, in, in Franklin as well. Um, so, uh, I think with that, uh, I'll turn it over to you guys for your questions.
Okay, thanks. And, uh, so, you might have already addressed a couple of these in, in your opening here, but, um, the same list of questions as I asked the other firms. So, can you speak to the coordination and support of the township's economic development efforts, including potential improvements to mass transportation, coordination and support to the township's revitalization, revitalization efforts in Hamilton Street, including pedestrian and bicycle improvements and potential improvements to mass transportation opportunities, coordination and building upon recommendations and analysis in existing township studies and plans and those of outside agencies? And that's what I'm referring to, the fact that you may have already addressed a lot of that. And, uh, and evaluation of potential complete streets initiatives?
Sure. Uh, so let me start with the economic development and revitalization. As I said, we prepared the three rounds of, uh, priority investment studies for Somerset County. We looked at thirty different, thirty-one different sites. I think six or seven of those were in Franklin Township. Uh, one was, uh, the Hamilton Street Corridor, and we looked at that several times. First, we looked at a couple of the, uh, parcels on the, on the corridor that were not, you know, underperforming, and we developed some alternative land use and zoning recommendations, some multimodal improvements, some, uh, bike and transit improvements to go along with that, uh, and then some small urban design elements that would go with that. In addition, uh, we looked at bicycle and pedestrian improvements along Hamilton Street Corridor. And what we determined that, uh, Hamilton Street is really not wide enough, and because the buses are there and you have on-street parking, that really bikes and peds should be on the parallel street system. So, we did, designed what is called a bicycle boulevard, which is a series of lengths that connects a series of different streets, uh, that run parallel to Hamilton and then come back to Hamilton as you get closer to the, uh, New Brunswick border where they have some bike lanes, and then funnel people down to the, uh, transit service. And part of that was, uh, predicated by the fact that you have these three new, um, apartment buildings there on, on Hamilton Street. Uh, we also looked adjacently at, on Franklin Avenue. We prepared a road diet assessment that we provided to the township, and I think might have been reviewed at this board. Uh, in terms of transit services, as head, we prepared a county-wide assessment of, uh, Somerset County's bus and transit service. And one of the recommendations was actually a supplemental east-west service that would connect, uh, from two separate lines, one from Bound Brook, uh, to New Brunswick. And then, most of that service actually runs, uh, through, uh, Franklin Township, partly, partially on Hamilton, Hamilton Street and Franklin. Uh, and those are two lines that are not connected, uh, interconnected in terms of rail, and that would give some additional shuttle-type services and provide local residents access to both of those transit services. Uh, in terms of complete streets, um, we are one of the leading firms in New Jersey in terms of complete streets. Uh, we've done everything except write the New Jersey State Complete Streets Policy. We've, uh, created training programs and taught hundreds of people on how to write and, uh, adopt the complete streets policy. We've, we're, taught people how to do complete streets implementation, things to be done in planning, traffic engineering, design, construction, uh, you know, all the things that would be done at the township level and all the things that you folks could do to implement complete streets. Uh, we've also designed, uh, several projects, uh, in this area that were complete streets projects. If you've seen the, uh, on College Avenue in New Brunswick, uh, right at the college, the new bike lanes, which are separated, uh, from the transit service. Uh, that's, that was a project that we designed, and we worked on the Rutgers Transportation Master Plan as part of that. We've also improved, uh, done some road diet. As I said, we looked at a road diet on Franklin Avenue. So, we've done complete streets all the way from policy to implementation to design to, uh, working to getting projects built. Um, what else did you mention? Coordinate with, uh, with county and regional agencies. Uh, you know, we've done a series of studies for the North Jersey Transportation Planning Association. Uh, these are all, uh, you know, projects that we were selected to do. Uh, we've worked with the NJTPA. We've worked with Somerset County. Uh, right now, I'm working with Burlington County, uh, Warren County. And, um, so, uh, we've worked with the County Planning Department in Somerset County. Uh, we've worked with the, uh, traffic engineers, with the engineering department. And we've also worked with the Somerset County Business Partnership as part of these prior, priority investment and circulation studies. Um, so, I think I covered everything, transit, coordination. So, I think that's that.
Thank you. Um, board, board questions?
I think, the question I wanted to ask, you actually, uh, mentioned it towards the end of your talk. You said, uh, you guys were responsible for the, uh, planning of the bicycle lane on College Avenue. That project is great, I can tell you that. Um, and I want to say that, uh, if you can duplicate what you did around that area as part of your project plan for this community, that would be nice.
Well, we'd love to do that. Actually, our approach is that we, everything is based on context. We don't start with a, an improvement. We start with understanding the situation, what the needs are, what the problems are, crash data, what the local community needs, and, uh, you know, that's our approach. Um, I've been doing this for about twenty-five years. And when, when we first started doing our studies, they were purely technical. And a technical study you can do really quickly, but when I do that, then it's my plan, it's not your plan. So, now, really, we spend, not half our time, but a good percentage of our time is just in meetings, listening to people talk. Um, that's really how we frame what the needs are. And then we do the engineering and the planning on top of that.
Uh, just one, one of the, uh, the issues that we have in, in this township is the traffic in certain streets. And, and honestly, having a bike lane in those streets from a safety point of view may not be the right thing. And, uh, it may, but it may not be. So, my question is, how do you assess the safety aspect of, of offering, uh, let's say bicycle lanes? And because there's always this accident with the bikes is always at the, you know, it's got to be looked into.
Well, like I said, it's, it's really contextual-based. Um, we always err on the side of what's, what's safest and what is the least risk. And we actually use a methodology that evaluates what improvement is needed based on, on the risk level. Um, so, we don't try to shoehorn something in just because, uh, you know, we want to put a bike lane on a street. Uh, you know, we actually are fairly conservative in what our recommendations are. Um, and, uh, research shows that people have a preference for separation from traffic, separation from heavy vehicles, separation from heavy volume. So, primarily, the large number of people, uh, are, really are looking for something that's a separated facility, almost like a wide, eight or ten-foot wide sidewalk adjacent to a street. So, we would never recommend, uh, you know, a bike lane on a fifteen mile an hour roadway, especially without any kind of separation. So, we're very careful. Personally, I'm a cyclist myself, and I know that there are small numbers of people that would ride anywhere, but, um, that's not what we were designed for. We designed for, for the context and for safety.
Thank you.
Pete, can you talk to us about how you've managed to, um, not only respect, identify, but also, um, advance the concerns of all of the populations that are vying to be heard? Uh, for instance, we have a, a very racially and ethnically diverse community here. You also have multitude of young people and older people, all vying for different things at one time. Uh, can you give us an example of a project where you're able to successfully marry in the recommendations of all in a way that served the community well?
Sure. Uh, I'll, I'll give you a couple of examples. Um, first of all, we've done, I think, fourteen or fifteen senior mobility workshops across the state as part of our work for New Jersey DOT. And that is very much based in that kind of collaboration outreach process. What we do is a three-hour workshop, uh, where we teach for an hour or forty-five minutes. Uh, we give people clipboards, and we actually take the seniors. And primarily, what we, we, we invite an audience that's about half seniors and half folks like yourself, professionals, decision-makers, people involved in the planning and design process. And we take people out onto the street, and we give them clipboards, and they notice things that they like and that they don't like, where they're comfortable, where they're not comfortable. And then we come back and we have a facilitated discussion. And another technique we use is, we take an able-bodied person like myself, well, we did this in Hoboken, and we put them in a wheelchair. And we let them see what it feels like to be in that person in a wheelchair. And actually, in Hoboken, the mayor was very gracious, and she got in the wheelchair and saw what it was like, uh, you know, to cross the street. Uh, the other thing you mentioned previously, environmental justice. Environmental justice is an integral element of most of the studies that we do. And I'll give you two quick examples, uh, very different, but, um, similar outcomes. Uh, one was the city of Patterson. The city of Patterson in the Great Falls, we did a circulation study about two years ago. Patterson is off the charts in terms of poverty, uh, foreign-born, you know, lack of English proficiency, uh, lack of access to an automobile. And it became very clear. In fact, the city of Patterson is extremely low, and the Great Falls area is even worse. And it's compounded by the fact that there are, within a study area, two square miles, there were about twenty schools, and kids are walking, you know, in the mixture of traffic. And the, the, the other part of it that complicates it is that the way the highway system was designed, uh, I-80 dumps traffic and the Parkway dumped traffic to Route 19, and Route 19 ends at the foot of Patterson. And if you live north of the city, you drive through Patterson, and you actually drive through this historic district with the falls, which is an incredibly beautiful thing, but never, nobody ever sees it because they're stuck in traffic. So, we identified very quickly that those children, and we had counts of over four hundred teenagers walking the streets in, just in one peak hour, in one of the most critical streets. So, wha- what we realized very quickly was the need that we had to not move traffic as much as to slow traffic down. So, on the bridge that crosses the Great Falls, we designed a road diet to slow traffic down and expand the sidewalk width from less than five feet to about ten feet. So, that was a critical thing that we designed. And we were able to convince the traffic, uh, department to do this. They were against it, but we had data that showed that of the two hundred and seventy cars in the peak hour that made the left turn past the school, only seventy were going past the school. So, we backed up this approach of understanding the people and what their needs were with the technical elements, because we met with the engineer repeatedly, and he kept saying, no, no, no. And I, we finally have, we used an aerial photography, uh, methodology, and it showed out of those cars, a very small percentage were actually driving to the school. So, those people were actually making the traffic and the safety problem in front of the school worse. And by eliminating this left turn, we were able to do the road diet. And once he saw that data, he actually said, well, I can't argue with the data. So, you need to tailor the information to what the audience is. Uh, and then, we're doing a study in Warren County right now. And just last Saturday, we went to a class, an ESL, English as a second language class, that's taught at a church. And most of the, the, the audience was, you know, non-native speakers, and we talked to them, and we found out some very important things that even though the growth in Warren County is flat, and you would think that there wasn't a diverse population in Warren County, that in certain pockets, there is. And these people that live there, that are, you know, they're, you know, low-income workers, they're just trying to get to work. Some people have actually had to give up jobs because they can't get to a job on a Saturday. So, we're able to, through these techniques, identify what the needs are. You start with the numbers, then you meet with people individually, and in some cases, you have to have people that speak, you know, certain languages, uh, to, you know, to, to really be able to get at their, their needs. So, I hope that answered that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, so, um, that concludes, uh, our, our interviews of the, uh, the three bids that we had. So, the way this will work, uh, is, uh, at the end of the night, we'll have our work session, and we'll evaluate them according to this criterion. We'll, we'll make it, we'll make a choice. Uh, and so, um, in the meantime, we will, uh, continue with our, have a, have a great night, uh, continue with our, uh, regular agenda, uh, which, uh, picks up with the, uh, minutes from November first of 2017. So, if I could have a motion to approve those. Do I have a second?
I seconded with just one small correction.
Yes, please.
On the, uh, first page, the present.
Mm-hmm.
You guys changed that word, uh, asked to be excused.
Well, recused is okay, too. Recused means you can't.
Oh, okay. All right.
It's okay. You were excused because you were recused.
Okay.
Um, with that?
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Godwin Amalola?
Yes.
And Chairman Arcini.
Yes. No resolutions? So, uh, we move into, uh, the, um, discussion. So, vouchers for Clarkin and Vignulo, December retainer in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Alex, uh, Karazi?
Yes.
Cecile McIver?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Godwin Amalola?
Yes.
And Chairman Arcini.
Yes. Extension of time, Bellagi?
Property Solutions LLC, PLN sixteen zero 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 four.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the planning board. My name is Ruben Perez. I'm an associate at the law office of Francis P. Linus. Uh, the firm represents the applicant, Bellagi Property Solutions LLC, with respect to this appearance tonight. The applicant is appearing before the board tonight to obtain an extension of time with respect to recording their minor subdivision deed. Uh, minor subdivision approval was memorialized in a resolution adopted by the planning board on November ninth, two thousand and sixteen. Uh, since that time, a client has been working diligently in order to satisfy the conditions of the minor subdivision approval. And at this time, we're requesting an extension of time until May eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
If there's no discussion, I move to approve the, uh, until May the eighteenth, the extension until May eighteenth.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Alex Karazi?
Yes.
Cecile McIver?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Godwin Amalola?
Yes.
And Chairman Arcini.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, so, uh, we'll open it up at this time to, uh, public comment on any matter or hearing, uh, any matter for, that, that doesn't have a hearing, uh, already scheduled for tonight. So, I move to open to the public.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak about any general planning issue that doesn't involve Paradise Adult Daycare, some more developers, who are ready to come forward? Well, Bob Mettler isn't here tonight, so seeing, uh, no public coming forward, I move to close.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, Paradise Adult Daycare, PLN seventeen zero 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 one three.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, members of the public. My name is Francis P. Linus. My law offices are located at twenty-one Clyde Road here in sunny Somerset, New Jersey. I'm pleased to represent Paradise Adult Daycare Healthcare in connection with this application. This is a site plan application for, uh, three accessory structures, three gazebo's, and a shed. Uh, the, uh, the gazebo's require one variance each, one for side yard and one for rear yard. Uh, and we're here tonight with Mitch Ardmann, who will do our planning testimony and engineering testimony. In case the board has any questions regarding the facility, I do have with me Vlad Tolchev, and he is the, um, managing member of Paradise Adult Daycare. So, without further ado, Mr. Chairman, if we could swear in Mr. Ardmann.
Raise your right hand. So, I'm gonna tell, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God.
Yes, I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
It's good. All right. Okay. Uh, first initial F, Mitchell Ardmann, A-R-D-M-A-N, President Reynolds Group, uh, licensed professional engineer, professional planner, testified before this board on several occasions.
Yes, Mitch. You're accepted. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Arcini.
All right, Mitch, uh, you want to describe to the board and the public the existing conditions of the property and what's located on the property real quick?
Certainly. This is our site plan in your set. We've just colorized for this application. I've marked it A1 with today's date. Um, what we have here is World's Fair Drive, the bottom of the plan. Uh, in red is the limits of the property. There's an existing building. It's a little bit over fifteen thousand square feet, which is on the property, um, now. You come into the site, uh, driveway, that comes into the parking area that services the building, and there's a second parking area as you come in if you would turn left into the property. Uh, bordering us, uh, this is the World's Fair Development. It's in the M2 zone. You're familiar with, uh, with this development, uh, the light industrial uses, uh, to the right, the left of us, and also across the street. Uh, to the rear of us is presently an undeveloped property. That's the R40 zone, those lots back up on Cedar Grove. Uh, I wasn't involved, but it's my understanding that a use variance was granted recently for fifty townhouses on that property. Uh, so that just kind of gives you general relationship of, uh, of the property and where we are. The total site is just over one point nineteen acres. Uh, there are no variances with the existing properties, uh, regarding coverage or, uh, building setbacks.
All right. And the current use of the property- And the current use of the property, Mitch, just so for the record.
The adult daycare is, is currently active. They've been running since the summer, since approximately August. They have approximately, in our discussions with the client, approximately a hundred and thirty people on the daily basins. They're licensed up to two hundred and fifty.
Can you describe to the board and the public what we're proposing tonight?
Certainly. We have three gazebos, which we're proposing along this back property line. This is the southern property line, and also one shed. The other constraints along this back property line, I want to point out, there's a drainage easement, twenty-foot wide drainage easement that runs right behind the building towards the sheds there. And as you can see, that's constrained the placement of the sheds.
All right. What's the purpose of the gazebos?
The gazebos are going to give basically a formal outside space for the people attending the adult care center. Right now, basically, it's a glorified bench and, that you can be out there. With these centers, there's often maybe a table with, with an awning or something like this. But this will provide a space where they can have everything from games, chess, to, to a ping pong table underneath those. And so they're not just inside all day long. People can be outside, shielded from the sun, and, and spend some good time outside.
All right. You want to provide some testimony, identify the variances that are being requested, and provide some testimony with respect to those variances?
Certainly. So the side yard setback is one variance on this easterly gazebo. That's ten point four feet, which we have there. And a rear yard setback on this gazebo, that's eleven feet that we have from the southerly property line.
All right. Let's, let's address the side yard setback. And, and again, ten four, point four feet is proposed to the structure and eight point three feet proposed to the overhang, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And basically, that one will be a C2 variance. We believe that's a better design situation for the gazebos. Basically, we've set the gazebos, there's two doors that lead to the outside, so to keep them grouped all in the rear of that building in that location. The adjoining use, again, is in light industrial use and they have storage outside. We do not see any impact to that adjoining property in that location.
All right. You stated a C2 variance. What, what purposes of the municipal land use law does it advance should the board choose to grant the variance?
Certainly. So basically, the purposes, we have basically D or G and I. So it's appropriate locations, sufficient space for an outdoor recreation area, and also desirable visual element and development techniques for good civic planning.
All right. What about the negative criteria?
Yeah. And just to describe, it's a very nice gazebo. It's detailed. It's, it's all wood, wood frame and a wood railing. So that'll go, go towards the nice design of the, of the gazebos that we're proposing.
All right. We want to address the negative criteria with respect to that variance?
Again, we are removing existing pavement to compensate for that. We really do not see an impact, again, to the neighbors to, to the side. So I would say there's no negative impact associated with this development.
And since this is a permitted use and this is an accessory structure incidental to a permitted use, do you see any detriment to the zone plan or scheme?
I do not.
Okay. You want to address the rear yard variance for the other gazebo?
Sure. The rear yard variance is a function of the hardship that we have, basically because of the easement. We can't move those structures into that easement.
And again, for the record, twenty-five feet's required. It's eleven feet proposed to the structure and nine feet proposed to the overhang, correct?
Exactly. That's correct. So since we're limited by that location, as you can see, there's no other appropriate location on the property with the pre-existing building that's located there. So we think, you know, that meets the intent of the zone plan to have it in a good location, good access to the building. And again, as far as negative criteria, it's presently undeveloped to the rear. If it is developed with a residential use, it's really kind of a like use as, as might be there. It's a, you know, residence to, to use that gazebo facility.
All right. There are no variances requested for the location of the shed, but did you have the opportunity to review the technical review committee memorandum issued by the technical review committee dated November twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen?
Yes. And I spoke to the client. We'll move the shed out of that easement.
All right. And what about, another issue was curbing?
The only issue on curbing that we'd like to bring up right now, so we're, we're taking up the pavement there to compensate for any impervious, there's just an edge of pavement. There's no curb in that back. So we just asked for a waiver for putting curb along there. It all just drains into that inlet. We can, you know, review that with staff, but we would, you know, like a little concurrence from the board.
All right.
Mr. Hawke down at the end.
Any board comments or questions?
I have no.
Not.
Yeah, I have no further questions.
What he just said. How do you plan to treat the rear boundary of the property?
Oh, it will be fenced. Good, good points. Yes.
Not sure. Our rectors of variance for fifty-two townhouses, I'm not sure if that development was required to do something like a fence. You may want to check on that, but I.
Certainly.
Definitely think for the benefit of your clients, solid fence.
Yes, and that's the intent.
Okay.
So Bob, to that point, is what kind of buffer might, might be expected? Are there, there, clearly from the aerial in our packet, there's trees and such. I assume that there'll be some sort of setback for the townhouses, so there should, would there be sufficient vegetative buffer beyond the fence to?
I would say that there's sufficient, there's probably sufficient buffer, but you're, you're dealing with a different age group of people and different lifestyle and things like that. I just think it's a little better. I personally think it's a good idea to have the fence back there.
You know, I do, too. I'm agreeing with you. I'm not either or, but like, there's both, right? I mean, not either or, but both, right?
No, you don't have to be, there's a good natural buffer.
Okay.
The fence is fine. I, I just don't remember, I don't think as a zoning board, we required the housing development to put up the fence across the back.
I, I don't recall. I'd, I'd have to look, but. We can look at the, we can look at the plans for that and see where they look at.
Don't need like fences six inches apart or something like that, but yeah.
I'd, I'd assume we'll be first, so I think we'll put it up and.
Okay.
Will there be concrete footings for the gazebos?
Yes, there will.
The question, will there be any kind of cooking in the area?
No. Well, there might be, a, a port, not in there, they just, they use it now. They have a portable barbecue, which is outside sometimes, but that's not a permanent structure as part of the gazebo. That's existing.
The gazebos haven't wood.
Yeah. It wouldn't be underneath there. It would just be on the side, on, on the sidewalk. Yes. Good, good point.
Will there be, two questions. Will there be any nighttime activity?
They go till seven o'clock, but usually just during.
Monday to Friday, right?
Yep.
So would there be sufficient lighting to accommodate the new gazebos back there?
Yeah. So it's typically, they'd only be at night during the summer when it's still light out. There is some lighting on the building presently, but the idea would not be for them to be outside in, this time of year when it's dark.
Will there be programmatic activities that allow for parties to take place where outside visitors are, are welcome, other than the adults themselves?
The, the clients, the clients benefit only, but.
Right. We have Mr. Vlad Tolchev. He's the managing member of Paradise, and he's basically the operator of the facility. Want to raise your right hand, please?
Swear I'm in.
Swear I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you got. Name and address, please.
Frank, give him your mic. You're gonna have to share the mic.
Can, everybody hear me? Vlad Tolchev, twenty-three World's Fair Drive, Somerset, New Jersey. The gazebos will be for the benefit of the clients only.
Okay. Any other board questions?
Mr. Chairman, just one question from Mr. Ardmann. So just to clarify, so for the rear setback, I think that's basically a C1, and the drainage easement is, is a hardship. So you can't comply because of that drainage easement. That's correct. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Let's, I'll make a motion to open to the public.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody wishing to speak on this application, come forward.
Seeing nobody come forward, I move to close at this time.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very briefly, it's a site plan application for accessory structures.
They're permitted uses. They're necessary and incidental to the main use, and we think we've established a case for the variances so that the board in their discretion can grant the site plan and the variances requested.
There's no discussion, I make a motion to approve this application.
I second.
Does the board have any comment about the curbing?
Work it out with staff. I mean, there's, there's no curbing there and it drains naturally back there. Probably shouldn't like put curbing to impede it. Carl seemed to be nodding his head, so that's good enough for me today.
Councilman Chase.
Yes.
Carl Hauck.
Yes.
Alex Karazi.
Yes.
Cecile MacIver.
Yes.
Charles Brown.
Yes.
Robert Thomas.
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Yes.
Godwin Amalola.
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini.
Yes. So the next hearing is Sycamore Developers LLC, PLN seventeen zero 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 eight. Oh, you still don't. Back and rocking. So Peter, while you're getting all set up there, let me just say, so the board has, oh, yeah, yeah, thanks. The board has heard this like twice now, at least in terms of concept and layout. So maybe we can expedite things and focus on like the, you know, reports and, and.
I, I would be happy to go through fairly quickly. I do think since there are members of the public here, however, and this is the first public hearing, that I need to spend about a minute or two, just so that the public is aware of.
The history?
The history and how we got here, and I think that's appropriate.
I think so, too.
So they probably, they won't have any questions on that if I can explain it properly.
Yes.
All right. For the record, my name is Peter Landfrit. My office is located at three thousand Hadley Road, South Plainfield, New Jersey, and I represent the applicant. This is an application for cluster development pursuant to the township's Cluster Provision Ordinance to create thirty-two building lots, one detention basin lot and an open space lot on property known as block four-two-three-point-zero-one, lot one-point-zero-four, which is just slightly under forty acres. In order for us to proceed with the clustered development, which is covered under chapter on, on your land use or land development ordinance, section one-twelve dash two-thirty-five, the applicant was required to prepare a plan to show how many lots that we can obtain with an as-of-right development in the R40 zone, which is in fact what we did do and we demonstrated that we can get thirty-two lots. We then came to the board with a sketch plan. The board reviewed it, and as required by the ordinance, the plan for the cluster was sent to various township agencies for their review and input. There were meetings with those agencies over the summer. All of the agencies recommended a cluster development rather than an as-of-right one-acre lot development. We then came back to the board, gave the board that information, and in, I think it was September, the board agreed that this project should move forward as a clustered development. There are a couple of bulk variances that we are seeking in conjunction with this application, which I will touch on with the testimony of Mr. Ardmann. The only other point I want to point out at this point in time was that under the Cluster Development Ordinance, we had a right to cluster the lots down to R15, which are fifteen thousand square foot lots. We, in discussions with the various committees in town and with this board, proposed a R20 development, which is, allows for larger lots and a little bit less open space, but actually lots that are more compatible in the area, and that's what we are proposing as part of this project. With that bit of background, I'd like to call Mr. Ardmann.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you got. Name and address again for this application.
So assuming you're the same person you were in the last application, you're also accepted.
Was he qualified both as a engineer and as a planner?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Mr. Ardmann, your firm prepared the plans that are subject to this application, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And again, I think for the purpose of presentation, we submitted a conforming plan as part of this application, as is required by the cluster ordinance, is that correct?
That's correct.
And do you have a copy of the conforming plan with you?
Yes. So this is the conventional layout plan. It was actually marked into evidence at that six-twenty-one-seventeen meeting. It was A2 then. I've, I've marked it as A1 for this meeting as, with today's date on it. And this is a colored version of that plan.
Okay. And the conventional plan does provide for thirty-two one-acre lots, is that correct?
That's correct. And just very briefly to orient everybody here, Cedar Grove Lane at the bottom of the plan, on the right side here, we have Amwell Road. As you stated, that's correct. We have a cul-de-sac that comes off of Amwell to the end with two spur cul-de-sacs. Each of these lots is the minimum forty thousand square feet. Each have the required frontage and the required setbacks for ample building envelopes. On the property, there's basically an existing pond with some wetlands in the southeast corner. There's a small pocket of wetlands in the northeast corner as well. As part of the development, we showed also that there would be room for stormwater detention basins to handle runoff if it was developed under this R40 scheme. The neighbors along Cedar Grove, as you see here on the westerly side of the plan, and the, the tree line, which basically surrounds the property. Again, we're R40, that's the Hunter's Development to the east over here. The cemetery is on the easterly border, somewhat to the south. And again, the properties along Cedar Grove are basically about thirty thousand square feet, about three-quarters of an acre, most of those lots.
Okay. And, and with obviously the conventional plan, there would be no open spaces part of that, and the only quote undeveloped portions will be those two areas where the detention basins were going to be proposed, correct?
That's correct. No open space, and you can see the proximity of the houses and the roads are closer than you'll see on the other plan to the homes on Cedar Grove.
Okay. So as a result of submitting that plan and then we developed a plan for clustered development, is that correct?
That's correct.
And can we have that exhibit marked, please? Or have you already done that, Mr. Ardmann?
So here's that exhibit. This is the overall plan that is in your set, sheet three. I've marked it with today's date, A2.
Okay. And can you just give the board a brief overview of that plan? I know the board has seen it, but there are some minor modifications since the board has last seen it, because there were some staff reports that were issued and some questions that were raised that we have already addressed. So if you could just take both the board members and the public through the proposed plan.
Certainly. So as you can see here, it is very similar to, at first look, to the plan that we have been presenting to you, the thirty-two lots. The, the driveway or the roadway which will come into the project is at the, towards the northern end on Cedar Grove.[1748.88] end on Cedar Grove. It was critical for circulation, really to move it as far away from the intersection as Amwell is practical, to keep good spacing there. So, we have the cul-de-sac road that comes into the end, and two spur cul-de-sacs that head off to the east. Again, twenty thousand square foot lots. As we discussed, each of these lots meet all the criteria for the R-20 zone. For the single-family lots, there are no variances requested. There will be some variances and deviations from the open space that I'll get into, but each of these lots does meet that criteria. Once you come into the project, the open space we show on the southerly part of the property here, the open space is just under twelve acres, eleven point nine acres, and it really, we've set up, and as Peter stated, to give a open space and a good view shed from this corridor in the town, and moving from the east, where it's more dense as you come around the curve, and Amwell here, where you come out to the more rural part, our thoughts and expressed by several board members is that was a critical view shed to keep, and is why the open space is in the location that you see it now. For the development, we have our one stormwater detention basin, which is in the northeasterly portion of the site.
All right. Mr. Arndman, before you go further on the development, we talked about these lots being R-20. I indicated also in my opening that we had a right to cluster down to R-15. Can, do you have an opinion as to why the R-20 lots are more appropriate and better than the R-15 lots for this development?
Certainly, I can get into that. So, a few reasons. We looked at the standard house sizes of being built, as well as the neighborhood. Once again, you have the R-40 zone, forty thousand square foot lots to the northeast, and approximately thirty thousand square foot lots plus on Cedar Grove. This plan will allow ample size for a house to be constructed, with more setback room, actually. In the R-15 zone, you're actually allowed the houses closer to a side yard and closer to the street to the front yard. This R-20 will have a further setback, give more spacing and a better visual element and look as you move down the roadway for the spacing between the houses. Also affords the opportunity to have side-loaded as opposed to front-loaded garages, so as you're going down the street, you're not looking at, you know, garage openings, garage, garage, garage. Basically, it's coming in the side. As you can see from the development and the lot size, when you compare them to Cedar Grove, they really match up pretty well as far as the widths of the lots that you see on Cedar Grove. So, we think that was a good development plan for here. The other aspect of the R-20, it is actually a more restrictive coverage and impervious. You're not allowed as much coverage as you are in the R-15. Though there will be savings as far as impact for impervious and runoff on the site, and I think some of those, Mr. Healy, had noted in his review comments as well.
Okay. Mr. Arndman, the stormwater management will all be handled by the one basin that you indicated on the northeasterly side of the property?
That's correct. So, as you come through the development, there'll be a series of inlets which are placed throughout the project and the roadway, as well as behind some of the lots. As far as the natural topography on this site, there's a ridge basically through the center of the site, which drains, well, more to the south, actually, which drains to the north as well as to the south. So, we'll be picking up that water and piping it down to the basin. Lots on Cedar Grove also actually pitch back towards the property and then split and go both ways. So, it's, the good news in respect to neighbors, it's not our runoff that would, in any event or any way, flow to them. They're really coming towards us, and we're picking up that in a series of inlets as well, which will pipe to the detention basin. The roadway that we have will be a thirty-foot-wide, standard township roadway. It'll have a sidewalk on one side, which is continuous, and we reviewed that with staff, and so it's going to be on the easterly side of the road, go around all the cul-de-sacs, and around down to the end of the southern end of the cul-de-sac. So, we'll have that. The other aspect I wanted to point out, so everybody sees, is there's an emergency access drive off the end of the cul-de-sac. On an original plan that you saw, we actually had developed the property with a boulevard entrance. Now, that's permitted by RSIAS to have just one access if you have a boulevard entrance to appropriate length. It wasn't the desired development scheme for the township, though, as understandably Public Works, et cetera, it's, they're not in love with boulevard or divided entrances. And a suggestion came up to provide this emergency access, and it worked for us. For our plan, the only impact it will have is it does impact an easement that does cut through the open space, and I'll describe that a little bit more when we talk about the open space. That emergency will be just that. They'll be chained on the cul-de-sac side, as well as the Cedar Grove side, so nobody's trying to cut through in and out of there. That is not the intent, to have that as a cut-through. It'll just be, for emergency, you know, as always, fire and police will have access to get through there if and when needed. We will have some utilities underneath that driveway.
Okay, and that driveway will, in fact, be paved as requested by the municipality?
That's correct.
Okay.
As far as utilities go on the site, there is a water main located in Cedar Grove. We're going to tap off that water main, bring that back to the cul-de-sac, and having this accessway here affords us the opportunity to loop that water line. So, we'll have a good continuous loop, and we'll be insured of good pressure throughout the development. Series of hydrants will be placed throughout the project. Similarly, with sanitary sewer service, there is a line in Cedar Grove, an eight-inch line that we'll tie into. The flow will actually come southerly in the driveway, and we'll have a pump station that's going to pump that up, and then a force main to get neck down to Cedar Grove. Again, that pipe will be underneath the proposed emergency access drive. So, as far as utilities go, that's, those are the two main ones. For the detention basin, you've heard the standards for stormwater management several times, but just to go over in general, there are three main criteria for the township, as well as the DNR Canal, and we meet all those criteria. You have to handle the peak runoff off-site, so you're not flushing too much water downstream. You have to take out, address water quality, take suspended solids out of the flow, so that doesn't flush downstream and into the natural streams and the wetlands, and you have to try and recharge a volume of water back into the ground. So, we are doing this with this retention basin. We have, its design is actually a wet pond, which will take care of both the volume of stormwater and the water quality design as required. We've submitted that to the town. We got some feedback back, as well as from DNR Canal. We addressed those comments, and I believe we're up to speed on the design criteria for the basin. There's a small adjoining recharge basin here, which is basically a sand-bottom basin, so when the excess water flows into that basin, that's the water that gets recharged. So, with those two components, we take care of our stormwater management requirements for the property and for this project.
Mr. Arndman, you indicated that the area in the, at the front of the property, the area fronting along Amwell Road is going to be proposed open space, is that correct?
That's correct.
And how large a tract is that?
That's approximately eleven point nine acres.
Okay.
And the width is, to give you some dimensions, we're over five hundred and fifty feet to the cul-de-sac. Obviously, we're extremely wide off of Cedar Grove, and then the one area which we'll talk about, which butts up against the cemetery, we're approximately two hundred and twenty-five feet in the leg that basically goes to the north.
Mr. Arndman, I indicated in my opening statement also that there are some variances that we will be seeking in conjunction with this application. Can you please review those with the board and explain those variances to the board members?
Certainly, and they're in Mr. Healy's report as well. Just make sure I follow through, I'll try and do them in the same order. So, the first set of variances go to the size and dimension of the preservation area. So, as discussed, it's eleven point eight eight nine acres, just under twelve acres, and it's, it's twenty-nine point seven nine percent of the total lot area. The requirement is fifteen acres and, as a minimum, and forty percent of the site to be reserved, preserved. Basically, the reason that we're seeking a variance from that area in the percentage is what we discussed in the beginning, and that's the change from the R-15 to the R-20 lot size. By keeping the R-20 lot size, we took up more room on the property, and that was a balance, and that's what we met with all the committees to take a good look at. The R-15 could provide the more open space, but we believe it would yield lot sizes out of character with this area of the township, specifically our adjoining neighbors, the three-quarter acres to the west and to the east, the one-acre lot in the Hunter's Development over there. Additionally, as I said, with the lower coverages in the R-20, I think there's a benefit that there's less impervious, more spacing between the lots, and a better visual impact. So, I think all those are positives for the development, but they do require the variance. The one other one in regards to the lot size dimension is the, there's a requirement for five hundred feet minimum width, basically, in all directions. As I stated, we're over five hundred and fifty feet from Amwell, we're plenty wide when you look at it off of Cedar Grove, but there's just the one section over here, the dog leg, it's approximately twenty-five feet, two hundred and twenty-five feet at the narrowest point coming from the cemetery. Again, the cemetery, you can almost see is a quasi-open space in itself, there's no, you know, active neighbors in that location, and the way the lots work out, we think this is a good site design for this property. It fits the lots well, so I believe with those reasons that it really fits and we can substantiate a deviation from the minimum dimensions of that lot width.
So, to be clear about it, the only place where the lot width deviation for the open space is in an area that butts the cemetery, is that correct?
That is correct.
And also, just for the record, there was, I did receive a letter, which I will put into evidence, from the Cemetery Association, I'll have that marked as A-3, requesting that we rebuild a fence for them and do other, some minor improvements along the property line to protect the cemetery from the development. I've spoken to Mr. Levis of the association. We have agreed to do all of the things that are in this letter, and as a matter of fact, they are already on the plans, is that not correct, Mr. Arndman?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest, though, that this exhibit be only marked for identification, as we do not have the ability to question the gentleman who wrote the letter.
Agreed.
Also, there is one other minor variance. The NRPC cluster ordinance requires that the tract be forty acres in size, is that correct?
That's correct, and we are at thirty-nine point nine one, so that's less than a quarter of one percent difference, and you hear it a lot, but I think this does meet the definition of a de minimis deviation on this one, that we are that close. The lot and yard size requirements from R-20 to R-15, I think I've spoke about. Again, we think the benefits of having the R-20 are shown here, again, work well with the neighbors, coverages, et cetera, not to repeat myself, but that is a variance that would be required.
Okay. Now, when the plans were developed, the open space that you referred to was being, was proposed to be dedicated to the...
One other before Mark chimes in.
I'm keeping track.
Thank you. One other variance would be for the encroachment of the easement. Though, as I discussed, that on the, coming on the southerly end of the cul-de-sac, that would be a forty-foot easement through that area. The open space, originally, it was actually going straight out towards Amwell Road, was brought up, the intent of the open space is to keep that as clear as possible, so we came down to Cedar Grove instead, and that did make a lot of sense. But that is an encroachment, but it does provide the fire and emergency protection requested, and once again, we did have a design option to build a boulevard entrance would have met RSIAS, but for township, public works, engineering staff, et cetera, this was a preferred design option, and we were amenable to designing in this method.
Okay. Now, with respect to the plan as prepared, it was proposed that the open space be conveyed to the municipality, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and also, as the plan was prepared, the stormwater management system that we are, is going to be on a separate lot, and was proposed to be conveyed to the municipality, correct?
Correct.
Okay. There have been some questions in the reports that the municipality may not in fact, or the governing body may not want the deten, the stormwater, I'm sorry, back up, may not want the open space, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and for the record, we will agree that, as required, to offer the open space to the municipality. If the municipality does not in fact want the open space, we will sit down with staff and find out the most appropriate way to handle the open space, whether it be retained by the current owner, retained by the new owner, or some other way to protect it. And for the record, obviously, we have certain deed restriction requirements, deed notices, and everything else that preserves it as open space, that will be part of the discussion.
Yeah, and just if I could clarify that, the ordinance, and just so the public understands too, no matter the mechanics of it, the ordinance would require that there be appropriate mechanisms placed on that property, whether it be deed restriction or conservation easement, or something along those lines, that that property could never be developed in the future.
Okay.
Right. I mean, I just think that, you know, I think we've discussed it in past concepts, right? We would sort of lean towards a homeowners' association rather than having the current owner retain it, because at some point in time, it is likely, unless, unless likely, it's possible, that the current owner is no longer owning it, and despite these deed restrictions, then we get into sort of a murky water. So, I mean, that's just our guidance.
Okay, and again, we will have that discussion with staff and try to come up with an appropriate mechanism to protect it, hopefully to the satisfaction of staff, and if staff needs to report back to the board for a final blessing, so be it if there, we need to get there.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that can be worked out at some point, I'm confident. I mean, obviously, I think you probably heard from staff that the same is true for the detention, for the retention basin?
That one's a little bit more tricky, but yes, we are going to meet with staff to review the detention basin. The ordinance requires that the municipality take the basin, but there are some discussions on whether there may be more appropriate ways to deal with the basin, so that will be part of the ongoing discussion with the staff.
Okay, so long as you're aware of that.
Mr. Chairman, if I could interject for one moment. For the benefit of the public, if there's going to be a deed restriction and/or a conservation easement type of language, this is a document that's recorded in the Somerset County Clerk's Office, but more importantly, it is a restriction that what lawyers say runs with the land, which means that even if it's sold to another party, okay, that restriction and the conservation requirements will continue to bind anybody who owns that property in the future. So, when it's placed upon the property, it's in perpetuity, forever.
The open space committee at last night's meeting made a recommendation of a conservation easement, just so you're aware of that.
Yeah, and I believe that was, when the planning board discussed this at the concept level, I think that was the planning board's recommendation as well.
Yeah, I mean, however it gets done, it gets done. You know, that, just, you know, to work it out, but in terms of, you know, when you think about who would own it, and obviously, Jim is, Jim is a hundred percent correct, right, that whatever deed restrictions would travel in perpetuity, no matter who owned it. However, you know, it becomes thorny when it's a private owner, just because, you know, say a tree falls on someone, right, and then, you know, what do you do about that? So, you know, a homeowners' association is probably the cleanest way to do that. Now, there's the issue of the detention basin as well, so, you know, we would just say, yes, and which we're, you know, by our ordinance, we're legally required to accept with your twenty-six-year payment for it. So, it may be, it may be, it may be who you to work something out, so, that's all.
As always, my client has developed in this municipality before, this is not his first rodeo here, and we usually manage to sit down and meet and resolve issues that may arise, and I'm sure in this case, we can reach some sort of an accord.
Yeah, I'm not too worried about it.
Okay. Mr. Arndman, before we go to the staff reports, you sort of reviewed the variances that we were proposing. Do you have any opinions or conclusions as to whether those variances can be...
Mr. Landfert, can I just point out one more variance, which is about as technical as, and at least in this situation, I think as insignificant as possible. Proposed lot 114 is actually a through lot. It's actually going to have frontage on the proposed street, and then there's a little fifty-foot sliver that winds down and actually touches Cedar Grove, so... So that's technically going to be a through lot.
Yeah, and I don't think we will need the variance. We have been in touch with both property owners on either side of that strip. My guess is, and we haven't finalized anything, but that strip will be conveyed to one or both of those property owners, so that that strip will, again, not be part of our development and will go...
That would be a lot cleaner, because I think it would be a lot more usable to them...
Right.
Than having a responsibility for somebody who lives on a new road.
Could you show us on the map?
It would resolve the question of the driveway on it. It also would resolve that question also. That is correct.
So, Mr. Lanford, are you going to, are you not going to seek the variance? Do you want to seek it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think just for protection purposes, grant the variance, but I think it will go away fairly soon.
Thank you.
Yes, so on Cedar Grove Lane, we have a lot, existing lot eleven and existing lot ten. The main lot actually has a fifty-foot partial, basic as you will, that could serve as a right-of-way that goes back into the property. And it is, we had to attach it to something, so it is attached right now to lot one point one four, as Mark said. So it is a portion of that property. What I would suggest today that, to further the request for the variance, that a restriction could be put on that lot, that a driveway could not come out to Cedar Grove Lane. And then, although a through lot, I think that would go towards the proofs that, for all intensive purposes, it could not be used as a through lot. It wouldn't have any property truly backing up on a neighbor there. And so I think that would meet the criteria for, you know, the balance test of any potential detriment for either the neighbors or the street here on Cedar Grove Lane. But that is the parcel that's in discussion, that's attached to lot one point fourteen. It's approximately, I think it's three thousand square feet.
Mr. Chairman, if this board considers a motion for approval, I would suggest that the form of the motion include a provision that this strip of land can be added to one or both of those adjoining lots without the requirement for any further subdivision application.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Arndman, can you please give the board a brief summary and justification for the variances that we are seeking, and then we'll deal with the staff reports fairly quickly?
Certainly. So just briefly, a conclusion on the cluster, which I think we've worked through with the boards, we're in agreement on that it's utilizing the NPRC option. It's the best design alternative for this site. It provides significant, well-suited open space, preserves the farmland, preserves the pond, wetlands area, and the view shed that we've been discussing at this corner of the town, which is a critical part of the kind of test for the NPRC design standards. In regards to the variances, I believe we meet the C two criteria of the land use law, advanced the purposes of a land use law for better zoning alternatives. In the description of the R twenty design, I think I've gone through that is more appropriate for this project than the R fifteen design. It supports, by giving us the R twenty, it would basically support the variance for the open space size and lot criteria. Those were the benefits of greater spacing between the houses, less coverage on each lot, better visually designed project. The easement through the open space, I think because it's supported by staff as a preferred design alternative, when we could have a separate design alternative, again, I believe that variance is again substantiated. With regard to negative impact of the zone plan or ordinance, I believe this support, this design supports the goals of the NPRC by protecting and providing the critical view shed, open space, and preserving the critical areas. So I believe that by granting the variances, you will be able to achieve the open space that you're looking for as part of the NPRC design. And again, I don't believe there's any detriment to the public good. The impervious will be reduced with allowing the R twenty design, and we don't see any negative impact as drainage, et cetera, onto any of the neighboring properties.
Mr. Chairman, before we move to the staff reports, I just have one follow-up question that just might be best asked now. Having examined the benefits from granting all of these variances and having reached the conclusion that, in your opinion, there are little or no detriments, you have to engage in that weighing process. Can you come to the conclusion as a professional planner that the benefits to the township substantially outweigh the detriments?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, before the staff reports, one little small detail. The curbing within the development, if it isn't, I'd like to specify block curbing to go with all the other ones in the hole, anywhere in the area?
It is curved and it is block, Belgium block, granite block.
Didn't do that once before, ended up with the other.
Anything else, Mr. Thomas? Okay.
I told you, minor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Okay. Mr. Arndman, you've reviewed the report from Mr. Healy, dated November sixteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Yes.
And we've touched on many of the comments that he has already, has raised in the report. With respect to the tree preservation, we will do what is required under the attach of ordinance concerning the tree contribution. Is that correct?
Yes, we will.
Okay. Would you just briefly touch on one comment on number seven C on the preservation of the hedge row and what we can or cannot do with respect to the hedge row that currently exists on the property?
The hedge row is kind of right through this kind of center-north portion of the property. Again, this was a balance in the design. To give more room to really preserve the hedge row, we would have had to push the cul-de-sac in the development further east, which would have impacted the open space. We will preserve what we can with the grading of the houses, but I don't want to, you know, say to the board that it's going to be a lot of the hedge row. It'll be the trees and the hedge that is basically along the easterly edge towards the property line and along the westerly edge towards the property line. Through the center, though, is pretty much the roadway and the houses that we have laid out.
So, Mr. Arndman, if I could summarize, and the reason I brought this up is that, not just the tree preservation ordinance, but the cluster ordinance identifies hedge rows as one of those resources that we're supposed to look to try to preserve when we do cluster.
Yes.
But you're basically saying, since that's in the middle of the development, if you were to try to preserve that, you'd be moving the development further to the, to the south, and that the preserved area that's on the plans would then be smaller, because everything would be moved over.
That's correct.
But you're having to balance that, and basically, it's your opinion that having the larger contiguous open space area is a better alternative than trying to preserve the hedge row. Is that correct?
That is correct. Well said.
Okay. Also now, in Mr. Healy's report, item number eight talks about a trail. Just for the record, the municipality currently owns property adjacent to our development. Is that correct?
That's correct, to the north, as I'm pointing at here on Cedar Grove.
Okay. And what was the request of the municipality and what's your response?
So we provided, there's a, an easement that cuts through the lots. It's basically a drainage easement to the basin. So we've made that a drainage and access easement through these lots to get to the open space area to be able to connect to the township open space area. And it was not requested, it was actually specifically requested it not be a hardscape, so we've just provided for that trail.
The question was raised, I think it's in Mr. Healy's report, as to whether it might be a good idea to actually add that strip to the detention basin lot one point two oh, rather than just having it be a, an easement, possibly move the house on the lot there over slightly, just to avoid any future, you know, the owner of the house getting his nose out of joint about people walking up that easement. It might be better to have it...
We could look at it with staff. The only, and I don't think the lot size would be an issue, it's just the setbacks from that property line, if it's over that fifteen or twenty feet, whatever it is, might make a difference, that we wouldn't want to turn that into a straight-in garage instead of a side-loaded garage. So that's what we're weighing, but we, if you're comfortable, we can work that out with staff.
It just, it looked as if there was room within the envelope to move the house over enough. You still provide that.
It generally would be cleaner if it's, well, depending on who's responsible for the basin, whether it be township or the homeowners association, it'd be cleaner if it's on that property as opposed to an easement over one of the private lots, for the reasons that Councilman Chase just mentioned.
Well, and I remember all the troubles we have with the easement going into the Dunn House, for instance.
We, we deal with easement issues.
As we talk about this, though, we do realize that the applicant's not looking to improve the trail any, I mean, obviously, we didn't recommend hardscape, but, you know, do we want to ask them to at least put something down to demarcate the trail to the edge of their property? Or how is that resolved in open space?
Oh, I don't think they discussed it. I would think if you put down just even something like broken up wood, is a better term for it, I'm sure, to wood chips, that, and they'd gradually melt into the soil, but they would establish the position of the trail, and then if the trail is used, it will remain apparent as a trail. If it isn't used, it won't be important.
What about markers that would let both the hikers and the residents know that there is a trail there?
Well, I think as long as it's demarcated in some way, that we don't lose sight of where it is, you know, then there's nothing, there's nothing going into the woods.
Yeah, there's nothing in the township-owned land now to the north of us.
I wouldn't do too much, because it's a trail to nowhere at the moment.
With the connection, the town might develop a trail.
But, I mean, I just like it demarcated, so you could take the chips from the hedge row and repurpose them.
I am sure we can work out the logistics of that with Mr. Healy and...
And I think the position of the trail would be on the top of the berm around the detention basin, and then I think you have a fence just down the slope of the berm there, so that it will be fairly easy to demarcate the position of the trail. Possibly the last bit making contact with the woods would be a little less definite, but...
That's fine.
Mr. Lanford, with respect to my report, I'm assuming that there are a few other technical things. I'm assuming your response is that you'll comply, but if you could address comment six, comment six.
Yeah, good. I was going to head there next, so that's good.
Sidewalks.
I think Mr. Arndman testified that we were proposing sidewalks, if you want to review that.
Yeah, it was just on the one side. I know there had been discussions at both sides, but, I mean, I think we feel on this development that one side, and since it is continuous, does provide a pretty good walk along the property.
I was looking at RSIS and what that says about provision of sidewalks, and it was a, the two different road classifications for local access, one being low intensity residential access, the other being medium intensity. And low intensity, basically, it says, it provides for sidewalks on one side, whereas medium intensity has sidewalks on both sides. What would this classify as?
This would be low. There's not any through road here, so it's just a cul-de-sac. I mean, if you took some of those, we could probably be more narrow and possibly no curb, so, but we're not looking to do that. So I guess we feel like we've picked a happy medium here with the thirty-foot-wide road curb and sidewalk on the one side. So I think it's appropriate and woodfall.
On the cul-de-sacs, they go on both sides? They go around the cul-de-sacs? Is that correct?
Yes, they go around these cul-de, all the way around, so it's a continuous walk. And then just up to, you know, the end of our cul-de-sac.
Why not extend all the way around? I mean, in terms of parity of the neighborhood, in terms of just human behavior, you're less likely to choose to go across the street to walk around. If you did it continuously, that would provide an internal path for everyone to exercise within the neighborhood, as opposed to going in one direction, reaching a dead end, turning around, bumping other people. It's just, ideally, you would have it go all the way around. Yes.
I mean, we've done both ways in neighborhoods. One that we have either no sidewalks or one side. We've seen it work, work fine. I mean, it can be a...
It certainly works, but in terms of best practices, best practice is both sides.
If it was, you know, Charles, I agree with you. I mean, at R, but at R forty, there would be no question. At R twenty, plus they were asked to increase the road to thirty feet, I think...
Correct.
That limits them, their ability to do that. At least they're along both sides of the cul-de-sac. I mean, in principle, I agree with you, but they're constrained in a couple of ways that a normal R forty wouldn't be.
One other question about that. With the thirty-foot roadway, is there on-street parking?
Yes, that's permitted.
I heard the thirty feet.
RSIS is twenty-eight, but thirty is fine for Mr. Haas.
For the record and for the public, that's the fire prevention. He wants his trucks to be able to get through neighborhoods, obviously.
And understandably.
Mr. Arndman, there were two reports that were generated dealing with engineering and public works. One was Mr. Haas' report dated November twenty seventh, and the other is Mr. Zelenik's report dated November twenty eighth. We've already addressed Mr. Haas' comment concerning the basin and will resolve that later, and the other comment in his report is a comment, and we've met that comment. And with respect to Mr. Zelenik's report, which consists of seven pages plus some photographs, you've reviewed all of the comments contained therein?
I reviewed them all and only have one for discussion. Basically, not a problem. It's a lot of housekeeping. We were able to resubmit plans, and they were quickly reviewed, so we're pretty much on the same page. And it's really, just a clarification, so there's no question, page five, lighting comments. So again, and over the many years I've done subdivisions in town, we've been back and forth, we have proposed lights at the, all the intersections, the end of the cul-de-sacs, and at critical points on the curve as you come in. And that would consist of nine lights on the site. We had not been trying to light these roads up like you would in a more dense development in R ten or in a senior development or something like that. I'm not quite sure where, it might have been a note on the plan or a reference to the typo light where the thirty-eight or the thirty-four lampposts, but it was not the intent to pepper this with that many lights. So we are proposing nine lights on the site, just to, at the critical intersections.
And they are LED lights, right?
Yeah, they are, which is, they're the latest PSENG, which I'm, I think they're always LED now with the PSENG.
So basically, you're saying that there's a typo there where there's not thirty lampposts, there's only nine?
There's only nine.
But you'll provide the detail of them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the details on, but, yeah.
In that connection also, I wanted to ask, the electric, electric wires, the cable, the telephone, will those be underground?
Every time, yes, sir.
Good. Resiliency.
So that was, that was easy. So...
And that concludes my testimony of Mr. Arndman.
Is the house is okay with the cul-de-sacs?
Yes, we've sat and met with fire regarding the cul-de-sacs. Everything is fine. It meets all of the requirements. I think that report that you have was an old report from some months ago.
April eleventh, twenty seventeen, yes.
So we've met with him since then. The revised plans reflect the changes that he requested.
That is correct.
Board questions? Ted?
I have a few more questions, although I think you'll find they're fairly small bore. One is about the street trees along road A. It's, environmental commission generally recommends, and I don't think they saw this iteration of the plans, that you mix trees instead of having nine straight of one species and eight straight of another species, because if something happens to one species and they all die off, it looks pretty bad if you at least mix the trees. It's better.
We could talk about that. Actually, we had revised it. I think we had a longer stretch of maybe twenty in a row, so we did cut that back. The only thing, and it's preference, I know my landscape architect likes to create, at least for a stretch, an alley of a similar tree for, to... tree for, to get a nice effect, but that's in the eye of the beholder, I guess, so.
Yeah, Councilman Chase, that, that was a comment in a, of mine in a, on a previous set of plans, 'cause as Mr. Arndman said, they had maybe fifteen trees, and then fifteen trees kind of all the same, and they cut that back, and it's more mixed up where on, uh, on the, you know, either side of the road, maybe there's eight rows of a certain type of maple, and then eight rows of, you know, uh, honey log, you know, and there's, you know, and they break it up more as they go down the street. Uh, and that's, by understanding, that's consistent with the Environmental Commission's, uh, landscape guidelines.
I'm a little surprised about using tulip trees as street trees because they, they grow very tall, taller, I think, than other, uh, tree trees such as the lindens that you have. And they have a tendency to blow over in hurricanes, and you wouldn't want to have them grow so tall that they'd hit a house if they blew over.
Uh, we, we have no problem taking a look at those. If they're, there may be a different variety, but if not, to swap those out, it's not a problem.
You might have a variety. A lot, um, on cul-de-sac, um, I think you'd call it, uh, Road C, the, the right-hand one, the, the house on Lot one point three four is sort of shifted to the left, so it's much closer to the house on one point three three than to the one on one point three five. In fact, the distance between the two houses is smaller than the length of the houses. I just think it would, it would be better to position it a little more evenly between the houses on either side, and I think there'd be room to still have a, uh, side-in garage.
I've, uh, just looking at my plan, I think that's doable, and once we get to final plot plan time, we would do that, but I, I don't see that as an issue.
Yeah. And then, uh, also on, let me check again, lot number, at the end of, at the side of the first cul-de-sac, uh, Lot one point two eight, you're showing a gradient of five feet along the back of the house, and that seems kind of unusual, that you'd have such a large gradient right up against the house. Can't, can't you spread that out more? Uh, what, what would you be showing foundation for half the house and not the other half, or?
At, at some points in, in the situation there is that the, uh, that, there's a pretty big cross slope from, uh, the cul-de-sac or Road B, from, from the southern, the right side to the left, so it drops off. So we had to make it up. That could be a good contender for a walkout basement in that area because of that slope, so we think it would work there. That, that I think at plot plan time, we would finalize.
That's everything I had. Got to bring the notes I'd taken. Most of them are, are things that have already been dealt with.
Anybody else from the board? If not, well, go ahead and open.
Make a motion to open it to the public at this time?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public wishing to comment on this, please come to the podium, state your name, your address, get sworn in by our planning board attorney, and, uh, offer your comments.
Good evening. My name is Richard Nazar.
Raise your right hand, sir. Somely swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you got.
I do.
Your address, please.
Uh, I live in Berkeley Heights, sixty-five Windsor Way, representing my mother, who lives at Lot ten on Cedar Grove Lane. Uh, my mother is Dolores Nazar. Um, my question is about the open space. Uh, currently, there are, as an existing residence and a large garage building existing on the property, I was wondering what would happen to those property, what would happen to the structures if the property was turned over, uh, to the township, or if it was turned over to, you know, uh, preserved land?
That would be part of the, the, the discussion we will have down the road. If the land continues to be farmed, maybe one of those structures may need to remain to store farm equipment. So, uh, again, that will be dealt with.
Not the house, though.
Yeah, with, as part of the discussion, whether the town wants it, if the town doesn't want it, uh, if somebody else retains it, if they're going to farm it, some of those, those structures may remain, they may not. So, uh, there's no determination at this point in time. I'm sure if the municipality takes it, everything comes down.
But, but to be clear, there's no house. There's no, there's not gonna be, there's not gonna be a residence on that property.
Correct.
And, and the reason for that is they, they demonstrated through, um, a plan to show how many lots they could accommodate on the site under the existing R forty zoning, which is thirty-two lots. They're proposing thirty-two building sites, so a, a, a house on that lot would be thirty-three. They can't have a house. So may, maybe they could have, as Mr. Lanford said, some structures for, for farm use or something like that.
But, uh, yeah, my question is, 'cause the existing residence has a driveway that exits out onto ML Road, would that be the entryway to the farmland, or it, it does this, this, uh, open space, would it be used as farmland? Would it be turned over to, to just grow wild, or would it be planted with trees, or?
I think, I think that's a detail, um.
To be determined.
To, to, to be determined. It could be, um, I, I don't think the township is going to, uh, take it, but presumably, the township could. Um, I, I think it could just, it could be conceivably leased to a farmer, perhaps. Um, if it was to be turned over, uh, and under the ownership of a homeowners association, for example, there'd be the de-discretion or indoor conservation easement placed on it, and it may just be allowed to grow back to a natural state, you know, and you'll see successional growth and eventually a forest there. Uh, the intent of this, the main intent of this exercise or this design is basically that it not be developed and that it be open in some way, undeveloped in some manner.
But i- if it is allowed to grow wild, it wouldn't be planted with any, any trees to start it? It would just let it go over time?
I think it would just grow over time, and nature would take its course in succession growth.
So, so the, the residence that's currently existing next to the pond area, would that be torn down? 'Cause it's a, it's a house.
I, I think, well, it, it, again, it, I think, I think the house in all likely, nobody will be able to, be allowed to live there. Um, I would think the house in all likelihood would be torn down because that's not gonna have any use for the farm use. There are some accessory structures, I believe a garage and some sheds. Conceivably, those could stay for the use, if it, if it is to be used as a farm, so maybe those structures could stay, this could stay to store the equipment and what have you for the use of the farm.
Page.
But the house would have to come down.
Page two of the plans is the demolition plan, and it says with all of the buildings to be removed, utility poles to be removed, stone drive to be removed. So, I, I think that unless things work out that somebody specifically requires one shed, everything will be removed, and that really will be the developer's responsibility. Because if it's going to be open space, well, the township certainly would not want any structures on it. Uh, the homeowners association, I, I think would certainly not want any structures on it, so. I, I'm sure, I assume your concern is you don't want an attractive nuisance there.
Yeah, I, I was, uh, I, I really don't have a feeling either way. I was just curious as to what would happen. I'm sure other people in the audience, the residents are, are curious as to what would happen with the old Resto home and, and with the, uh, the garage that's there. Um, but I, I have another comment, though. Uh, there was mention of the hedge grove that it would be taken down. Uh, I don't see an overlay on the, uh, the, the presentation here, but, uh, from my familiarity with the area, uh, I can see that the existing hedge grove actually would go on the border of the backyard properties of the. I think an overlay would be appropriate to understand where the hedge grove exists before determining whether it should be taken down.
Mr. Arndman, do you have a, an opinion on the, the location of the hedgerow relative to the, the roads and the, and the buildings?
Yeah, I mean, that was, uh, approximately correct, as he pointed out there, but, um, with the grading that we have to do, we know at, at the roadway, obviously, it comes down, the grading associated with that, and that was kind of my point. I think towards the edges, east and west, we can save, but with the grading and disturbances in between, I didn't want the board to think that there was gonna be much saved, but we will work. If they're nice trees, there's no reason not to save them.
Those are my only comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I've served on the zoning board with your father.
My name is William Tyber, and I live on three twelve Cedar Grove Lane. I own the first house where the access road is going to be.
Can you raise your right hand, sir?
Yes, sir.
Somely swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you got.
I do.
Please continue.
Okay, uh, two questions I have. First of all, I'd like to know, is there going to be any type of fence that will run across the back of all the houses east side of Cedar Grove Lane, from my house all the way down to where the entrance, to where the road comes into the development? Is there some type of, do you plan on building something?
No, no, no fence was proposed. When the individual homeowners buy their lots, typically, they'll decide, you know, a type and style that they may want.
But you have no plans at all to put anything in there?
That's correct.
Okay. Also, on the access road, is there anything of a sidewalk that will go in there, or is it just strictly an access road?
And, and you're saying the, this one here that comes out by karma, yes? Yes. N- n- no, emergency only. It'll, it'll be paved. It'll be sixteen-foot wide paved. People could walk on it, but there's no separate sidewalk.
Okay, and that will be blocked off where there will be no traffic going through there?
That's correct. Chained, chained and locked.
My only two questions I have.
Thank you. Hello, uh, my name is Walter Quagliano.
Somely swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you got.
I do.
And your address, please.
Three oh four Cedar Grove. And, uh, I guess my question is, if it's supposed to be forty percent open space, why can't we have the forty percent open space? It, that's a simple question. What, why, you know, so.
Mr. Arndman, would you repeat the testimony that's relevant, so you can answer this resident's question?
Yeah, certainly. So forty percent open space would basically mean much smaller lot sizes, which could be developed. They'd be more the R fifteen. Uh, there'd be, um, much more, uh.
But wouldn't it, I'm, I'm sorry, but wouldn't that spread the whole, the lot out, instead, instead of making this one area that each lot would be bigger, and we would just get, you know, for, to be still forty percent is forty percent? That's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, I understand. So basically, uh, the way, the way to do that, this, and we had sketches that we looked at with the, with the various committees when we looked, and basically, it would be in, uh, an area here at the end of the cul-de-sac, and these lots would all be squished into these areas. So each one of the widths of these lots would be smaller, and there'd be more houses lined up on either side of the road. So for each of the people, the properties on Cedar Grove behind you are pretty much the same width. Each of those lots would be more narrow than it is now, and there'd be tighter spacing between the houses.
Yeah, but if we put more to this area, that's an order to take out.
Right, but then it, yeah, then it wouldn't be open space. We'd have to make, the idea is to have that open space as contiguous in one big chunk, so it's not a piece here, a piece here, a piece there. That's how the ordinance is written, and, and for, for good reason, so that it, it, you get the boast bang for your buck looking at a large piece if it's gonna be farmed, or if it's just gonna be open, so it gives you the visual, you know, um, aspect that you like as, as a true big piece. So, um, that would be, the only way would be to basically much more dense in this northerly portion of the property.
And the, the question of whether to have the smaller lots and bigger open space, or the R twenty lots, uh, and a smaller open space, was discussed by the planning board, the environmental commission, the open space committee, the agricultural advisory committee, and all of them were in favor of this balance. Not all of them were unanimous, but all of them favored the, the R twenty-sized lots and a slightly smaller open space. And even with the R fifteen, I don't think we would get forty percent. We'd get fourteen acres and fourteen point something acres instead of eleven point something, but we wouldn't get sixteen, because this is under, um, forty acres, and there just isn't room to do that.
Yeah, if I could speak to this real quickly, I mean, this, in my opinion, is, uh, th- this is why they have the C two variances. And the C two variances is it's a better zoning alternative. So what the applicant is saying is, they could comply or, or more closely comply if they made these lots fifteen thousand square feet, and they'd come close to that forty percent and the fifteen acres, or, or, but in this situation, they're trying to create a situation where the proposed lots are the same dimensions and the same width as the homes that are along Cedar Grove. So it'll fit in and, and, and look, um, more seamless and, and, and more compatible with the neighborhood that's already there. And then they're basically.
More seamless if we just had the farmland there, but that's easier to get.
Yeah, that, so, but they, they have a development, and they, they could either develop the whole darn thing and chew, chew up every single piece of, every square inch of the lot, or they could do this cluster. And then the question is, should they cluster them down to R fifteen, or make them a little bit wider, a little bit bigger, and make them blend in a little bit better with those homes that are along Cedar Grove? And that, and by doing that, they're taking up a little bit more land, so they don't technically comply, and they're saying, "Board, this is a C two variance. This is a better zoning alternative than if we fully, to, clustered to the full extent that the law allows."
Yeah, it goes in that north direction, and we.
That's a major, that's green.
Yeah, so we drain just upstream of that, and so we just.
You drain it, you drain the.
Basically into that, yep. So the water that drains there, we're just keeping that same drainage pattern going.
Can you just very briefly describe the storm, what, what the basin does before it goes into the, the stream?
Right, so it'll hold, obviously, with the pavement, you'll have more water rushing off. So that, that, there's volume in that basin to hold it, so a, a large pipe comes in, but a small pipe restricts it going out, and then the basin fills up and holds that water for anywhere from six hours to forty-eight hours, so it lets it out slowly. And then that water will discharge to that exact point that you said and meet that existing stream flow.
It will, does drain.
Yep. Exactly. You, 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 you have it, yep.
Probably satisfied.
My name is Donald Acoco, three twelve Cedar Grove Lane.
Raise your right hand. Somely swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you got.
I do.
Thank you.
Last time I said that was when I got married. Twenty-five years. Can you top that? Okay, uh, my question is not so much with the aesthetics of this project, but I would like to know if you have done any kind of survey of traffic control in this area, and what were the results? What kind of survey was taken, um?
I, I will, we, we have here, first of all, we, as required by the ordinance, we did a traffic study. Uh, it was prepared by Dylan and Dean, and it was dated March ninth, two thousand seventeen, and that traffic study measured both what the traffic is on Cedar Grove Lane, both in the morning and afternoon peak hours, and what effect this development would have on it. Mr. Dean is here this evening. If, if you would like to hear his testimony, I would be glad to have him sworn, uh, or if the board would like to hear it, but he would have been my next witness. Uh, so if Mr. Dean can answer your question, I think we can bring him up and have him answer the question.
Good evening, board members.
Raise your right hand. Somely swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you got.
Yes, I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Gary Dean, D E A N, professional address, seven ninety-two Chimney Rock Road in Martinsville, New Jersey. New Jersey. As you've been before this board numerous times, this is Liz, so you're, we are-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Mr. Lanford indicated, our firm submitted a traffic impact analysis for the subdivision. It's dated March. That traffic study included counts along Cedar Grove Lane during peak commuter rush hours, which we would expect to be the time most affected by the proposed traffic from the subdivision. In, during the morning, traffic is busiest on Cedar Grove Lane. Most of the traffic travels north towards Easton Avenue, and we would expect the patterns from future residents of the subdivision to follow that trend, principally oriented towards Route two eighty-seven and obviously Easton Avenue. The metric that traffic engineers use is known as level of service. We know that Cedar Grove Lane is busy. And for the people that are turning right, their movements will largely be facilitated somewhat by the signal down at Amwell Road. The people turning left, as is life on Cedar Grove Lane, they're going to wait a little bit longer. It's rush hour. But the study shows that, yes, they'll be able to get out, but they're going to operate at a somewhat lower level of service. But it works safely and efficiently. We have adequate sight lines looking north and south on Cedar Grove Lane. And because it is part of the county road system, there's an approval process with the county as well, but we'll fully follow that. And from my review, this design complies with all of the county design standards for a new street. Similarly, the entire road system is governed by what's known as the residential site improvement standards. That is a statewide, those are statewide regulations that dictate the width of the road, the curvature of the road, as you've heard discussed, whether there's curbing and sidewalks. And again, those standards are all met with this design. So we have looked at traffic. In terms of impact, and that's usually the standard the boards are most concerned with, in the morning, in the peak outbound direction, and same thing coming home at night, we would expect about twenty-four vehicles in an hour. Now, it sounds like a lot if it's twenty-four vehicles all showing up at once, but they don't. Not everyone leaves at once. Some people leave at five-thirty or six or seven-thirty. And that's about one car leaving every two to three minutes. From anyone driving on Cedar Grove Lane or, or a budding residence, other than the individual right next door who doesn't have homes behind them, it's imperceptible and, and it's not going to have a detrimental effect on Cedar Grove Lane. From a traffic guy's perspective, I, I can't tell the difference in twenty-four cars in an hour.
Do you have the times that this was given or this survey was taken?
The traffic counts and we send staff out to sit there and watch every car that turns. Those were conducted on March seventh, from seven to nine in the morning and four to six-thirty in the afternoon.
Okay, you need to have people out there a little bit earlier than that because it is a thoroughfare to Route two eighty-seven. Traffic does begin, or I should say, cars do appear at the five AM and continue all the way on through. There is, anyone who lives there right now will testify, I'm sure, that no matter if you're turning right or left, it's very difficult to get out of your driveways right now. So if you're talking approximately thirty-two new homes with averaging two to three cars per household, we're talking probably, what, ninety-six more cars in that one consolidated area. So my concern is, my concern is, yeah, the traffic in the area.
Correct. I have the same concern. I'm, I'm a traffic consultant. I've appeared before this board for thirty-five years, and, and, and I spend my career evaluating traffic. Not everyone leaves at once. That's, that's, as you indicated, people start their commute as early as five or five-thirty, and that continues up till nine or even nine-thirty. So over that, say, three and a half or four hour period, those ninety-six cars will be absorbed. In the single peak hour, twenty-four will leave. And, and that is borne out through countless studies conducted by traffic consultants, and we evaluate the statistics of traffic flow specifically for this type of process. So I share your concern about more traffic. This board does as well. Obviously, the zoning allows and anticipated this type of development and traffic demand. It's not hundreds of homes. It's thirty-two more. And when we put it in the context of traffic on Cedar Grove Lane, as I indicated, I know it's busy. It's close to eighteen hundred cars in a single hour, of which twenty-four will come from this development. So in, in terms of-
Twenty-four?
Cars. In one hour, there were eighteen hundred cars on Cedar Grove Lane. That's what we counted in the peak hour. We're going to add-
You're estimating only twenty-four coming out of this?
In one hour, in that same peak hour, correct. And some will leave in the hour following and some will leave in the hour preceding, but in the peak hour, that will be, it's basically saying eighty percent of the residents or at least one car per resident will leave in a single hour. So it's a fairly conservative model.
I should live there.
It's, it's universal for single-family development. And I appreciate your concern, and that's why we study it, and that's why we present these findings to the board. No, it's an intersection. It's just like, I think it's called Como Drive. It's just to the south. It's, it's a street.
There'll be a stop sign, though.
There'll be a stop sign so people yield appropriately, of course. I thought that was given. But it, it's visible to any driver and it's like any one of the unsignalized intersections along Cedar Grove Lane from Amwell to Easton. Not every intersection has a light. Nor do you want one. I, I understand.
Quickly, please.
May I ask you again? My, there was discussion about the fifty-foot by three-hundred piece of property next, borders my mother's property and the neighbor next door. My mother has showed interest in purchasing that property. We had conversations with Andy Tindler from Sycamore Developers. My question, I heard before that there wasn't going to be a need for a subdivision from the property, but if my mother purchased the property, is it automatically connected to her existing property or does she have to go for any kind of other documentation or?
We would be required as part of the final plat to subdivide that strip from, from the rest of the development. We would then convey it if it goes to your mother, to her, and it would automatically merge into her lot. She would not have to do anything.
I would concur with that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Seeing no other people coming forward from the public, I move to close.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yes, Ted.
I'm sorry, I had one more question that I forgot to ask. This has to do with the Canal Commission report, which is dated in April, so I imagine that your answer is going to be you've worked this out in the meantime. But they say, this says, "New sources of stormwater that tie into the drainage systems discharging to the canal were prohibited pursuant to NJAC seven colon forty-five dash eight-point-three-eight-two." And that you're actually adding more land to, that will feed into Cedar Grove Brook and the canal. So you are adding to the drainage into the canal. It's because Cedar Grove Brook goes into the canal rather than under it. Now, have, have you worked out something to satisfy the Canal Commission?
We, we believe we have. I think, as you're aware, they, their requirements are even more restrictive than DEP or the townships because of going into the canal. So there's a balance we have to do. And I think in this last round, after several conversations and reworkings, that we've satisfied them and we'll be able to gain their, we have to gain their approval, but we think we've addressed their issues.
Yeah, there's, there's a real reason for this because Cedar Grove Brook dumps sediment into the canal and it adds to the expenses for New Brunswick to purify the water it takes out.
Yes.
Ultimately, ultimately, though, Ted, it's, it's going to be DRCC, not our fault. So let's, let's let them deal with it.
But, but we did resubmit when we resubmitted to, to your staff.
Let's, let's, let's move. So Peter, summation?
Just very briefly, I, I think you've seen this. Now, this is the fourth time we've been here. I think we've addressed all of your comments, the plans they have, that you have before you this evening. Again, show a further revision based on comments of staff, comments of the other agencies. I think the planning testimony by Mr. Hartman justifies the variances that we are proposing. We would respectfully request that the subdivision be approved as a cluster with the variances that we are seeking. We will comply with all of the staff reports as agreed upon, and also the representations that we made that we will resolve the issue of the open space with the governing body and/or staff, and also the detention basin with the staff.
If there's no further discussion, I move that we approve the application with all the recommendations that have been previously discussed.
And, and then we just wanted to make sure that we had the language in there, Cecile, for-
Cecile, would that include the strip of land that would be added to either one or both of the adjoining lots without the necessity for a separate subdivision?
Yes, it would include that strip of land.
I just had one reservation that came to mind when the discussion about the three buildings came up. Maybe there should be a timeline set up where at some point they're not, if they're not being used or there's not some firm reason to keep them, that they be removed.
With, with the, the recommendation that the buildings be removed before the first house is completed.
That's your amended motion?
Yes.
If, if the buildings are, if any buildings have to be removed, they would be removed-
Removed before the first house is completed.
There may be some buildings that may remain.
Just so it's not hanging out there.
Okay.
Second that.
Yeah.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Cecile McIver?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Godwin Amalola?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Have a good holiday.
You too, Peter. So moving right along, we're, do the-
Work session.
Work session in, in public, so we can certainly have that discussion. Yes, you're ready? We'll get two, two minutes.
Is this going to be filmed or we tell him to?
No, we're in public work session. We're not in executive session. So, board, Peter, sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to, we got to finish, right? I, I don't like, but we're still, we're still in public. We're still, we're still on camera. So we'll just talk about these proposals really quick, so hopefully we can come to some, some conclusion. So Mark and Vince, costs. So in one of them, I saw a cost, but I didn't see a cost in all three. So would you like-
There were, there were costs in all three. Yeah, you have to look a little-
I kept looking for them and looking.
Basically, as far as costs, two of, two of them were consistent with each other. The H two M and the WSP were both in the neighborhood of thirty thousand. CME was a good deal lower. They were at twelve point, twelve-point-four thousand.
Okay, so-
And just, if I could, just, I mean, that is a factor, obviously.
Yeah.
What I would recommend is, you know, in my opinion, I think all three proposals coming in at under thirty and putting the RFP together, that's, I'll tell you, I, I used to work in consulting. That's kind of the figure that I kind of anticipated we would get. So it's kind of, it's kind of interesting to see that two of them came in at thirty.
I second that.
What I would, yeah, what I would recommend is, is really, you know, you have the proposals. You've heard from the, from the three firms of their relative experience. I would recommend you have a discussion on which one you feel is going to do the better job. And I, with, with cost being a factor, but, but not the overriding factor.
Yes. So, so let me, with that overview, let me, let me give you, the board, my view for what it's worth, and then maybe I can just, we can just go down the line and, and you can concur, differ, add whatever you want. But maybe it'll help to frame it. So in, in listening to these three proposals, my impression was, you know, we've had CME in the township for many, many years, doing many, many things. That said, I kind of got the impression that their proposal, as far as the township goes, was, for lack of a better term, vanilla. And I think maybe the difference-
What did you say?
Vanilla, because vanilla.
Yeah.
Generic.
Yeah. And, and so I think that, you know, you could say you get what you pay for or, or, you know, maybe we're just getting, you know, one heck of a deal at twelve-five. You know, I'm not, I'm not opposed to lower cost, but I didn't get the impression from their presentation that, you know, it was going to be very sort of by the numbers, boiler plate, you know, we're, we're do, we do certain things and, and not really, I didn't get maybe a, a, a really warm and fuzzy feeling that, that they were going to give us their, their best shot. With H two M, if I had to rank the three of them right off the bat, H two M would be the lowest in my mind. I'm sure they're professional. They have all the degrees and certifications and wonderful. I just don't think a lot of their experience is relevant to Franklin Township. I mean, we all know where East Orange is, and nothing against East Orange, but they have a whole different host of planning considerations than we do. And, and I just got the sense that, you know, they might be out of their element here, maybe in a more urban environment, solely urban environment. They would be fantastic. And then came WSP. So for WSP, I really thought that he, he gave the most specific and relevant answers to Franklin. You know, they worked in Franklin. They've done stuff with Somerset County. They've done stuff on Hamilton Street. They've done stuff on World's Fair. So it's reasonable to think that they have a foundation on which to build most of their, most of the plan going out from there. But all the questions we asked have been, Charles asked some really good questions and, you know, very relevant to all three of them, and, and yet slightly different, which, which was good. And, and I, I mean, I got the impression that their answers were the most specific and relevant to the township. So I would rank them number one. I would rank CME number two. I would rank H two M number three.
Mike, can I just say one thing? That's the whole reason I'm here tonight.
Oh, we just thought you didn't have anything better to do.
If you choose to-
You've come to give us our-
You missed us.
Yeah. Well, from, from an economic development standpoint, as you heard him speak, we've been working with them and the county together on Hamilton Street. And as, as Ted knows, in, in, we, in the CB district, they have, they have extensive experience as he's, so I would, I would recommend and we, I, yes, and I would appreciate if you gave them the due consideration, given the fact that Mark and I have been working with them and the county. And it makes it much easier for us to continue that and our economic-
and it makes it much easier for us to continue that in our economic development efforts with someone that we have a relationship, and in fact, the principal who is here is the individual who showed up and came to all the meetings. He didn't send some little underling to deal with that, which was really appreciated. Can I comment, please?
Yes, you may. In fact, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'll have to, I have to say this. When we do, from my own professional experience, when we do decision matrix from vendors, there are certain things you look for, the quality of what they want to do, historic, from a historical perspective, and also the presentation. You could see the guy that represent WSP was very detailed, concise, and also with examples. You don't just come up with stories that doesn't measure up. And I could say, as a professional guy, looking at him, his temperament in delivery was quite amazing, and as a result, I give him that chance to go ahead with this project.
I agree with all the comments you've made about it so far. I think CME may be a little overconfident from the work that they've been doing, maybe coming in and having preconceived ideas about what they're going to find in terms of circulation, and I just can't help thinking that something's being missed, that their bid is so much lower than everybody else's. I'm for a bargain anytime than anyone else's, but get what you pay for.
But we don't want substandard service either.
WSP, I like the idea that they have some familiarity with, with the county, with the region, where we do have a working relationship with them. Vince is obviously very happy with it, and I think that's an important part of, of going forward, is Hamilton Street. WSP is for...
I was favorably impressed with WSP, and I'm very glad to hear that Mark and Vince are recommending them.
Yeah, it's, I mean, just generally, it's important, I mean, as you know, I've been doing, well, basically, other than the economic development and the circulation, I've been doing the master plan in-house, but there does come a time where you need expertise, and we want to get somebody who can really, who really knows, you know, this field, who really knows Somerset County and Franklin, and can really help us, you know, with a quality product and a quality process.
Ted?
I would, I mean, to me, just reading the presentations before we got here, I felt that WSP's familiarity with the town and knowing what we mean when we say that circulation is important to economic development, that that made them the overwhelming favorite. I'd also add that, and as has been remarked, the presentation went into the most detail about what they would do, particularly about outreach to the public, it was almost, almost too much. But I also liked the fact that they went into some detail about complete streets. I'm wondering if we're going to get a complete streets ordinance out of this, and I don't have to write it for Sustainable Jersey purposes. Maybe we, but I hope we'll get some recommendations, and I would just hope that they keep in mind all of the, some of the things Sustainable Jersey puts on about complete streets, I find a little unreasonable, but that in the main, we should be able to satisfy Sustainable Jersey, and that, but this complete streets, most, the majority of the communities in the county, and the county itself, have adopted complete streets plans. And in fact, I was proposing to pretty much use the county's plan suitably adapted for the township. I mean, it's, it's, complete streets is mostly a statement of intentions, and then you get to really take action when you do something with a street.
And so you thought, you thought WSP was probably strongest there, too?
Yes, definitely, definitely.
So, Charles?
Yes, I'm fortunate enough to be extremely knowledgeable of all three firms. I've worked in different capacities, served on different committees with a number of them. I agree slightly with the lineup in terms of the top three. I certainly would, would say WSP, I think, outshine the other two, but I think H2M would come in second. When it comes to WSP, there's no question throughout the state that they are leaders in terms of complete street policy adoption and implementation, and they're not only just leaders in New Jersey, but across the nation. They certainly bring forth the most progressive thoughts about how to improve circulation and transportation at a local and regional level. They have experts from planning through engineering to traffic engineering, et cetera, so all of the things that he said, I've been privy enough to, to witness. I would also add that their involvement at the public level is certainly matched with what they've revealed in the report. I've seen that take place, too, so they do care a lot and know how to recognize those groups. The one thing that I would add that may be perceived as a negative is that we do have to take in consideration that he had the opportunity to go last. And so once you've had an opportunity to hear the questions, you're more able to respond to them, but WSP's certainly number one. I would say H2M was second, as opposed to CME, and the reason I would say that is because of my familiarity with how well they've done in East Orange. It's a very, very tough situation to navigate from a public input standpoint, and they've brought in the experts locally who had the knowledge to put forth a plan or product so far that's representative of the multitude of voices there. So WSP was number one for me, and H2M a close, close second. I think that CME provided a generic plan that did not take into consideration the challenges here, and it just seemed like it was off the shelf, so that's why I went that way.
Thanks. Jen?
So this language for "I agree," and you know, when you're with your students and they have the same idea, rather than repeating things, oh, I'm not going to repeat a lot of things that people have already said. When Charles asked some really specific questions, WSP could just rattle them off like that. Now, I get that they asked, but again, to have those specific examples and those specific touch tones right away indicate someone that's clearly got experience and, and knows what, what resources sort of pulled together for what we're going to need. So I also like that he said that the decision...
So I've received so far two, does, it's up to the board how you want to do this? Do you just want to have the members fill out their own, and they can just...
No, I mean, Alex, for what it's, for, you know, he had to leave early because of his conflict there with Peter as application, but his ranking was, he actually did fill everything out, I sort of filled it out in my head. I mean, I would assume that if we discuss that like this, we don't really need to fill this out, because it's our opinion, but he ranked WSP first, H2M third, and CME second. So it sounds like maybe, you know, Charles has some perspective on H2M that I didn't have, but it does sound like there is no, and Carl, you didn't... Mark? Yeah, Mark just like, Carl doesn't matter, right?
WSP, they did, they did work in the county, they did the county plan, and, you know, we're dealing with a lot of elements and development on the county. Hamilton Street is targeted, so, you know, we should go with WSP.
All right, so it sounds, it sounds like we can probably not necessarily have to, like, you know, parse numbers, but just, we'll recommend WSP.
Okay.
You don't need a resolution or anything like that?
No, no.
Just our work session?
I think it was, it's pretty clear.
You need this, right?
Well, why don't you pass it down?
Okay.
I think purchasing may want to see them, so that, I mean, I could tell her to just, I think I could tell her to look on YouTube, I mean, it's a pretty obvious, pretty deliberate process we've gone through, so that's what's...
But I mean, if they, if they need documentation, then we'll give them it.
And Charles, do you have a comment about before about presentations for the applicants?
Additionally, I wanted to say something regarding that WSP came last. I don't think so. The quality of questions we asked them, the way he was able to answer those questions convincingly...
And WSP came first?
Yeah, I was just, just as a part of side comment this time. So he was able to answer those questions vividly without any deviation from the contents, right? So he gave us, he gave me all the right answer. So I don't believe, to my own understanding, that coming last is going to give him that advantage.
Oh, oh, coming, you mean last in the order?
I want to be clear, I don't, I'm not saying it's giving him a clear advantage, but it does help you prepare for what questions you're going to hear. There's no, no doubt in that, and that wasn't to take away from his presentation, because everything he said was of value, and I've seen him and his firm stand behind it. I just wanted to point out that there is a benefit of going last.
But what you had to say, having had experience with all three outside this room, that's better than anything we could get in this room.
I, I had one other comment, and I certainly want to adjourn, too, but I asked Mark about, there seems to be a, a great deal of investment has gone into providing modern technologies where we shouldn't be currently receiving presentations on the board, as you've done a long time ago. I mean, for the benefit of the public, I think it would be great to use the technologies we have here, and it should be required of those presenting to be prepared to do as such, because we have proper documentation before us that we can look at, but when the public has to look forward at a chart that is very small, it's hard for them to really peruse that and provide comments or, or, you know, suggestions. So given that we have this modern technology, I would just propose we use it more often.
Yeah, and, and that's, and I suggest you to bring it up to the, to the group, and that's something we can easily address. I mean, the applicants, particularly before the planning board, I mean, they're engineering firms, this is, this is, they can easily put this on PDA, they could, whatever he just did, he could easily project that. So we, when we, we can do that in two ways. One, when we talk to the applicants, you know, because we obviously have meetings with them, you know, at the staff level, we can remind them. I'm thinking even, even during the, we send out a scheduling letter. We could put something on the scheduling letter that says, you know, you're scheduled to appear on X, Y, and Z date, and put a thing there saying, you know, and indicating the technology that we have, and that they should be expected to project it on the screens. The only time, and this doesn't affect you as much, the zoning board does have more, like, homeowners coming in for decks and stuff like that, I don't think we could require that of them. But certainly anybody who's represented by engineers, architects, what have you, they should be expected to be able to do that.
That sound good.
With that, I don't think we have any more meetings this year, right?
And so the 21st, is there anything, Christine, on the...
Good, then I will wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday, Happy Year. Whatever you celebrate, celebrate it, enjoy it, and thank you all for a great year, and we'll see you in 2018. I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.